Cummings.
Here.
Present seven.
Would you all please stand for the invocation and proclamations, which will be led by Councilor Robert.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our students would stay in place. We have a certificate for you, so if you don't want to turn and face, face kind of that corner, and if your moms want to take pictures, now's the time to do it. I'm going to ask you your name, age, school, and your favorite subject. Don't be nervous.
My name is Felicia Lohr. I am 11 years old. I go to Merrill Elementary, and my favorite subject is social studies.
Great, thank you.
Um, my name is Mackenzie. I'm 11 years old. My favorite sub, I go to Merrill, and my favorite subject is science.
Okay, great, and thank you. Now, you can stay here and watch local government in action, or go home and study. I know it's a tough decision. Thank you. First on the agenda this evening, we have a number of proclamations. First is Building Safety Month, and there'll be no one here to accept a proclamation, so in the interest of time, I will, as Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, I do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to participate, participate in Building Safety Month activities. Next, we have Historic Preservation Month, and I would ask Shirley Maddox to come forward and receive the proclamation, and then you have a few words for us, so bear with me while I write, read this rather long proclamation. Whereas National Historic Preservation Month has been observed every May since 1973, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, urban, rural, and everywhere in between, and for all Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in preserving, preserving the complete history of the American experience, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, encouraging heritage and cultural tourism, enhancing property values, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character, and whereas Oshkosh has eight nationally-recognized historic districts, one site, Riverside Cemetery, and individually-listed historic places. Now therefore, I, Stephen Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do proclaim, do proclaim May 27 as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Oshkosh to join citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Shirley?
Thank you for the beautiful proclamation, and I think a lot of those points we are seeing happening right here in Oshkosh, many people are becoming more vocal that they like what made Oshkosh special 100 years ago, and when they come back to visit, they want to make sure it's still there, because that identifies us. This last week, the Baker Tilly Report came out, and it's the impact on, of historic preservation tax credits on jobs and financial benefits to the city. And Oshkosh is one of four cities in the state, Milwaukee, Madison, La Crosse, and Oshkosh, who in 2014, 2015, and 2016, applied and received millions of dollars in tax credits. The total bundle of tax property value was 113 million in 2014. With this three years in the tax credits, it is now 583 million. So it benefits everybody, and anyway, I'm going to make sure that the city gets a copy of this report, and thank you for your enthusiastic support of preserving our history.
Thank you, Shirley. Shirley, Shirley. Next, with the members of the Oshkosh Convention, the Visitors Bureau come forward for the next proclamation, which is National Travel and Tourism Week. This is a long one. Did you guys write it? Whereas travel has a positive effect on Wisconsin and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, it also impacts business productivity and individual travelers' well-being. Whereas travel to and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than 2.3 trillion in economic output in 2016, with 993, 990.3 billion spent directly by travelers. Whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 15.3 million jobs in 2016, including 8.6 million directly in the travel industry and 6.7 million in other industries. Whereas travelers spend, generally generate tax revenues of 157.8 billion for federal, state, and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs. Whereas travelers to Oshkosh and Winnebago County generated 242.5 million in direct visitor spending, 463.8 million in business sales, supported 4,879 jobs, and 134.1 million in labor income, and 30.9 million in state and local taxes in 2016. Whereas international travel to the United States is the nation's number-one service export. In 2016, travel generated 246 billion in exports, creating an 87 billion trade surplus for the United States. Whereas meetings, events, incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and consumers, and reward business accomplishments, which in turn boosts the U.S. economy. In 2016, domestic and international business travelers spent $307.2 billion. And whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. Whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth and creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors. Now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim May 7 through 13, 2017, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, excuse me, and urge the citizens of Oshkosh to join me in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. Congratulations. Which one of you is going to take the mic first?
Justin's hands are full.
Excuse me.
Thank you for that, and I might be accused of writing that, because I'm known to, when I write something, it's pretty long, but you got all the facts and figures there, and it's simply to say that tourism is big in our state, it's big in Oshkosh. We moved up in Winnebago County and Oshkosh this year. We were number 11 highest generating. Last year, we moved up to number 10 this year. Our revenues increased 3.75 percent, 3.74 percent this year. But Oshkosh has so much to offer, and that's why we are called Wisconsin's Event City. But keep in mind that what we do for events in Oshkosh isn't, isn't just about tourism, it brings a lot of visitors into our community, a lot of visitors who spend money in our community, but it also, in my mind anyway, improves the quality of life in our community as well. We've got wonderful attractions, we've got wonderful restaurants, hotels, we've got the Oshkosh Waterways, we've got now the Riverwalk, we've got a visionary council who sees the value of tourism in our community and has been addressing that over the years. Our convention center, which brings travelers in as well. These are all pluses for our community that make the community better for us, but also our travelers can enjoy as well. So I just wanted to, I'm speaking, I guess, on behalf of Wendy Hillsberg, who just left us as our Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director. I'm the Board Chair. Wendy is much more exciting and enthusiastic than I am, but I do want to thank the recognition of the council and having this proclamation. Thank the attendance of some of our board members, Mike Cluff in back, Bill Wyman here, Steve Herman is on our board as well, Justin, a member of our team at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Kathy Cluff, our Sales Director, and Jody is here representing the CVB as well. So with that, we're very thankful. Tourism is very strong in Oshkosh, and we're very thankful for that and what it does for us living in the community as well. Anything to add, Justin?
Sure. You don't have to.
I reiterate what you said, you know, thank you, you know, to everyone here, the council, the city, the community. We couldn't be this successful without you. It's not just the CVB, it's the whole community. And we had great numbers this year, top 10, which we're very proud of, hoping to get up maybe number nine in a year or two, so that's our goal. But we, we've seen a lot of success, and what, what really helps is seeing the city progress and develop. That helps, not only bring events and meetings here, but it helps keep some here as well, which is really important. So just a big thank you to everyone involved in tourism, and we're looking forward to promoting Oshkosh as Wisconsin's Event City for years to come.
Thank you very much. I love those numbers, they're, they're kind of big to, to read through there, we don't deal in billions too often. We have one more proclamation, and that is Kids to Park Day in 2017. So Chad, would you please? This one is short, and not a lot of big numbers. Whereas May 20, 2017, is the seventh Kids to Park Days organized and launched by the National Park Trust, and whereas Kids to Parks, Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline of park attendance over the last decades. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the possible health issues of inactivity, and whereas Kids to Park Day is open to children and adults across the country to encourage a large, diverse group of participants, and whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors, and whereas Kids to Parks Day is intended to get the whole family outside, being active and having fun in the great outdoors. Now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim May 20, 2017, adds Kids to Parks Day, Day 2017, and urge the residents of our community and committees across the country to come to enjoy the City of Oshkosh Park System and Kids to Parks Day 2017 and throughout the year. Congratulations. You want to see a few words? I thought, I thought.
Thank you, Mayor, common council, for your continued support of our Parks Department and the amenities we get to put out there for people to use. In regards to Kids to Parks Day, we're looking forward to hoping people show up, for one, the lake flies are gone, and two, the weather cooperates, but we will have some nice activities at our zoo and our amusement area in addition to our normal shelters, playgrounds, amusement center, everything else that we got going on. So we strongly encourage people to come out, and thank you very much for your support in doing so.
Good chat. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Shirley and I both serve on the Landmarks Commission, and we've been working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau over the last year, year and a half, to develop, to develop a historic tourism program for the City of Oshkosh. So as we look at it, we want to celebrate our history, but also it is another driving force in economic development. So thank you, both groups. Next on the agenda is license status updates, and Mr. Roth, do you want to go through the four, the four of these?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think representatives of two of the groups are here. Two of the groups indicated that they were going to be out of town this week, and I just took the liberty of just extending those two to the 23rd. They both indicated they would be ready on the 23rd. That was Packers, Bub, and Robbins. So the two this evening are the Morgan District and Tower Associates. They were given notice by the City Clerk's Office. I don't know if they confirm necessarily, Pam, that they were going to be here, but you can certainly call and see who's here to represent those groups.
They are.
So the first is the Morgan District, at 228 West Sixth Avenue.
Good evening, councilors. Peter Lang, 2300 Whitespoon Drive. I'm here as a representative of the Morgan District. We are currently working to secure tenant mix to proceed with development. We think that having and maintaining a bar and restaurant as part of that mixed-use development is an important aspect. We're a rather large site at 27 acres, and we would hope that you would extend us the courtesy of time to continue to work on that for development. I think the council has retained a license for property on the other side of the river, which acknowledges kind of how important that is to development mix for those areas. So I'd ask you guys to extend this thing courtesy to us as we continue to work with our development plans.
Can we ask questions, or?
That's.
This license has been dormant since November of 2014, for all intents and purposes. We're now in May of 2017, getting close to three years.
The taking down of the mixed-use or the development that was on the site was no small task. This is not just a single-tenant building that we're trying to work on, it's a rather large development, so I do understand that it's taken a little more long, a little longer time than your traditional development. But I think if you look at the size of the development, what we took down and what went up in place, I'd hope you can understand that the time and the, the delay is appropriate given the investment that's going into the property.
Timeline to use it.
I'd like to be in the ground. I'd hope to be in the ground already, I'd like to be in the ground next year.
Hopes.
I, I.
Deadline?
I can't guarantee you anything for sure. I mean, until I have tenants signed, until I have a mix, but yes, we're working on it diligently.
Can I ask, how long will it be? I'm sorry.
Ms. Eubrey, have we had any contacts from people who are looking for licenses to build out new establishments?
At this time, no.
And, okay, I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Paul Mary?
Time-wise, it's just a little frustrating to look at giving an extension for an indefinite period of time. Looks like we still have many trucks sitting there, they're not exiting, which would kind of be a sign that construction would be imminent. Is there a deadline by which those will be out of the way in order to, or are you waiting on a tenant before that even happens?
Well, certainly before we would terminate the lease, we'd want to have a tenant and development plan, so as we go forward and sign leases, we move forward with development of blueprints, which is several hundred thousand dollars. As we do that, that allows us to secure and fix our costs, and we have some city approval processes that have to flow through during that process as well. The lease does have a termination clause in it by which we can move forward well within the timeline for development to, to accommodate that. So the trucks are not the impediment, it's the economics of the, the site and the economics of the development that will drive it.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Just one follow-up question. I mean, what is the timeline? I, I mean, is to say we're hoping? Are we looking at a year? Are we looking at two years? Are we looking at six months? What are we looking at to see some there, there, to actually see some? And I understand the development process, but this is, as I said, this is going on now close to three years that this license has been open. When are we going to see some there, there?
I would like to be in the ground, starting on infrastructure by year end. Can I guarantee that? No, and even if I did, there is, unless I have tenants, I can't promise you that we'll be in the ground. And I'm sorry, I would like to give you that assurance, I'd like to be in the ground already. As I said, we're trying to negotiate and land the grocery tenant and the mixed-use, which will really drive this project forward.
Grocery store, they were in front of us 18, close to 18 months ago, weren't they?
I think it was about.
12, 12, all right, 12 months. And where's that standing?
We are in negotiations on that lease. We have lease comments going back and forth. I believe that they have some concerns over the View Corridor, which is something we're trying to work through. I've expressed that and shared that with some of you personally in my conversations. Again, we, we are going back and forth and trying to get it, but I cannot give you a firm deadline of when we will be in the ground. I apologize, I just wouldn't want to be less than truthful.
I had a question.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, so just to clarify, so you're saying at this point right now, there's not, there's not one lease that's signed for that, for that development?
No, we have letter, letters of intent back and forth, and we have leases back and forth, but we do not have signed lease agreements at this point in time.
Okay, so one of the things that came up when, I think it was, you know, the, the last council meeting, is, you know, just clarification, because obviously, you know, we're in a great town, but sometimes it, it does feel small-town, in which, you know, we've heard things that you guys aren't developing at all, that there's, that there's interest that you guys aren't, like, that there's not going to be a development. So, you know, can you?
We're still dedicated and moving forward on the project. We, we work on it on a weekly basis, we are investing dollars in a regular timeframe, we are committed to seeing that site forward.
Okay, okay.
Do you know how many trucks that are approximately leased there for spots?
I, it's not by spot, it's just on a pure per-acre basis.
Because I know that's, Oshkosh Corp. pays quite well for that, so I mean, is there any plan just to keep it as a stocking lot for Oshkosh Corp.?
No, you would certainly prefer to have apartment and mixed-use retail for that site, and that is our overarching agenda.
Yeah. I just have a comment. I, I'm, I'm in support of keeping the liquor licenses there. I think we all know that we're investing millions of dollars in the Riverwalk right in that general area, and I think that it's an important piece. I think quite a few council members who have been on council for some time know the value of a liquor license, and if we really want development in that area, it's not like some or other ones where it's not in a developmental area. I think it's important that we, as Mr. Lang pointed out, we, we kept one for the other side of the river in the Marion Road area for future development. I think we just have to trust a little bit here that, that they are moving forward, that they are going to develop something on that property. I'm sure the bridge will weigh into that possibility, but that's 2022, we're talking 2017. But I think we need to continue to support them in any way we can at this point. We have a TIF out there already, so I think it's important that we keep the liquor license for this property so that they have something to work with. Another tool, as we keep saying about tools in the toolbox, this is just another tool that could help future development in that riverfront area, so I would support another year of the license, even though it has been not so much per se, but enacted since 2015 to this location, and so that's really only two years, so I'll support it.
May I ask? This council fully understands economic development, as our track record shows. It's not a matter of trust. We're just simply asking, none of us here are questioning the economic development and how it goes, we're just simply asking simple questions about timelines and that, so we can have an idea to make the best decision moving forward. No one here doesn't trust the developers. We want to see them succeed. It is incumbent upon us as councilors, it was just brought up in the last election, that this council doesn't ask enough questions. All we're doing is gathering information. There's no one here who has said they're against it, it was simply a matter of asking some questions, so we can gather information and make the best decision.
Does the council, council have any other comments or questions? Does your, do you, you take a vote now on this license? Or it expires what, end of?
It expires the end of June. I need direction from you whether we want to go forward with the renewal process or the non-renewal process.
As part of the, is if we renew it, does that hold it for a year?
Yes.
So then we would have to provide that trust for another year to, to see something moving forward.
Correct. And you had also mentioned as well the last meeting that you didn't recommend a six-month renewal, correct?
You can't do a six-month renewal, you would have to come back with a revocation.
Okay.
If it was shorter than a year.
Okay.
Because the licenses are.
So we could, so we could, maybe I phrased my question wrong, we could approve it for a year, but during that year, if there is no activity, we could come back for a?
You could put it on the agenda and request a revocation hearing be held.
Can we set it for review in six months?
You could direct me to bring it back for a discussion, and we could invite them back, and we could get a status report.
May I?
Yes.
What, I, I will, I will, I will lean towards approving it for a year, but I would ask the developers to give us regular updates with where things are, probably like at least six months from now.
Is that a notice update or email council members?
Doing where we are. Keeping us in the loop with where we're at, I think would be if it would be, is directed to Ms. Eubrey.
Okay. I'm more than happy to keep communication open.
Okay.
We need a motion, though.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and renew this for another year.
I'll second that.
It's going to come back to council.
You're going to get the liquor license renewal next?
Next, May 23rd, it'll come out.
Just direction, yeah.
Okay. Then bring it forward for?
Next is the license update for Tower Associates at 2010 West Ninth Avenue.
Good evening, I'm Charles Hurdle, I'm an attorney, I represent Tower Associates, who are Tom Roush and Dick Gabor. This particular building, which housed cinders for more than 25 years, and lastly, hot rod willies, was taken back by my clients when the operator died. He took it over back in January of 2016. Since then, they've been actively seeking a new tenant for that, for that location. They've listed the property through First Web. They've listed the property through First Weber. First Weber has aggressively marketed the property, and there's been great interest. In excess of 25 people or potential tenants have viewed the, viewed the property. Negotiations have reached the point where leases were drafted, and unfortunately, the leases fell through at the last minute. As I stand here today, I cannot tell you that there is a tenant lined up. Mr. Hoopman, Steve Hoopman, who is the representative from First Weber, who is in charge of the listing, is prepared to advise you of exactly what level of interest there is for this particular location. It's, as you all know, it's a very, very good location. Historically, for decades, it was servicing families through a restaurant, and we anticipate that the property be leased up sooner rather than later. A series of unfortunate events have led to the property sitting vacant for more than 12 months. We're confident that within six months, there'll be a tenant there. So we are asking that the license be renewed to the extent that the council wants communications just in the same fashion that Morgan Associates would provide it. We're happy to do that as well. But this, this property has been actively marketed, and really, the property owner has done everything reasonably possible to find a new tenant that will utilize the liquor license that was granted, that's being, that was issued for that property.
Mayor? Ms. Pansky? Ms. Pansky?
Thank you. Mr. Hertle, are you at liberty to say why the leases have fallen through at the last moment?
It's been dollars and cents and find, you know, find items, and there's going to be a certain amount of work that's going to be required of a tenant to get that property back running as it should be. There's some names out there that if we could disclose them, you'd say, ah, that'd be a great place, location for that particular restaurant, that particular operator, but it's just come down to dollars and cents, and there's been some bad luck.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Hoopman, could you, you just dropped a packet on us. Could you give us some basic, what this is we're looking at?
Correct. Excuse me, the packet of information is pretty much all the marketing activities that we've done over the last year. Actually, the first page is from LoopNet, the recognized national leader in commercial listings, and in the last 30 days, there have been 826 times that the site has come up on an inquiry, and actually, 29 times in the last 30 days that an actual interested party has looked at the information. Some of the additional information is on there with Excellergent that we marketed through First Weber. It's marketed through Catalyst, it's marketed. Actually, it was marketed through LandWatch as well for a number of months, and it's still out there, but we don't actively track that one. So part of the other reason, we could have had a couple tenants at one point, but the owners are really not wanting to have a sports bar out there because of the other two bars that are located in the complex. They feel another sports bar would really be conflicting with that. We could have had that probably a couple times, but they would rather have it as a family restaurant, some type of restaurant like it had been before, rather than a sports bar. So the price has come down on it from what it was originally a year ago. So we are remarketing it, actually, I've got an amendment to the listing contract ready to go tomorrow to re-advertise the price at a, at a different rate. And so I will also be re-contacting many of the interested parties to see if they have interest. Today's environment of opening a new restaurant, we've contacted restaurants up and down the valley throughout, from Milwaukee to Green Bay, I have, and a lot of them have maybe two in Fond du Lac, or one in Appleton, one in Green Bay. They just don't want that third location right now because finding employees is very difficult and managing it becomes a headache. And they love the location, but they're just hesitant to jump into it. So it, it's not an easy process, all considered with employees and, and, you know, just the operating if you're not in town. So there are, like I said, several that we're going to go back to now, but can't guarantee anything, but, you know, it's-
Just ballpark. From the time a lease would be signed, obviously, there would probably be renovations.
Yeah, probably.
From the time a lease is signed, what would, when would we, when would you be looking at this being viable?
Typically, people have asked for about 60 days. Unfortunately, when the place closed down, it was walked out on. And so there was a lot of cleanup that had to take place at that time. The equipment was repurchased so that it is still there from some activities that had to be cleared up. And so the equipment is there, but it all needs to be reclaimed, sanitized, any remodeling or renovations that a party wants to go on to. We've had estimates that, you know, the cleaning of the equipment's going to be 15,000 to 20,000. You've got awnings that have to go on, that's another 10,000. So you've got 30,000 to 50,000 up front in just renovations and cleaning and getting it set up. So again, for a, for an operator to jump into that with 50,000 to 75,000, having money to stock the food and so forth, it's a, it's a big undertaking, so.
May I just, one question? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I would concur with what Mr. Hoopman has to say. In the commercial real estate market, especially with restaurants, it is difficult. Because not only the, what, what Mr. Hoopman mentioned are certainly challenges, but especially with financing. Because the restaurants are so high-risk, that's the other thing as well, is when you have people that are taking a look at it, they either have to fund it 100% themselves, or they're going to have to personally guarantee in most of the restaurant operations. And then two, you know, you know, it was well-known that Mr. Engelmann certainly had some, some issues, and obviously, his death was very unexpected. So I'm not terribly surprised that there hasn't been somebody found for this, but it is an ideal spot. So I, I'm certainly going to be supporting continuing the liquor license. I would continue to support that.
This is, Mr. Hoopman, just kind of a interesting question. You're listing it as a rental property, are you also trying to sell it?
No, it is part of the entire complex, and it's not for sale.
So it's not for sale, okay. I agree, Councilmember Allison Osby, I would support moving it forward to next council meeting for approval. I think it's a prime location. I think it, with the activity that he has seen and showing us, I think it will just be a matter of time.
Ms. Pansky?
Mr. Hoopman, the last page of this packet that you gave us, there's an advertisement from First Weber. Looks like it's dated March of 2016.
Correct. That was when it first was listed, and this is just the advertising. When we first list a property, it gets in the Northwestern in this type of a format. So this is really when the property first became available a year ago, basically, 14 months ago.
So then besides the online marketing and that, are there other printed?
In the Northwestern, it really doesn't include routine advertising. It goes onto the commercial sites. So other than the Sunday ads where there's open houses for houses and new listings, that's the only time that it goes into the Northwestern, so.
And does GoEDC also have access to that?
They have access to all our commercial listings, yeah. Do they actively market it? Probably not market it. If they had a restaurateur come in and contact them, they would have access to that information, or they would know to call me to, to follow up with it, so.
Thank you.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
When it was listed new, it was 8,500 a month?
The prices come down considerably.
And then it was 7,000 in September?
Right.
What's the current?
Probably around 6, 65, somewhere in that area.
Thank you.
That rate includes taxes and snowblowing, grass cutting, common area maintenance and so forth.
I would bring, I would concur with bringing it back for approval. Again, please keep us in the loop of where things are going.
Does council agree?
Yeah. Thank you. And the other two we'll have back at the next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Next on our agenda is public hearing. We have one, which is Resolution 17-226. This requires, requires three readings and then a vote. So Resolution 17-226, approved final resolution for special assessments, Evelyn Street, CP Avenue to Bay Shore Drive. Second reading, Resolution 17-226, approved final resolution for special assessments, Evelyn Street, CP Avenue to Bay Shore Drive. Third and final reading, Resolution 17-226, approved final resolution for special assessments, Evelyn Street, CP Avenue to Bay Shore Drive. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this resolution? We'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Currie Seven?
We have citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only, statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issuing in fact on the City of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is anyone who would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Alex Crawford, I am a senior environmental studies major at the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh.
We'll need your address, too.
512 Oghuma Boulevard. And some of you here saw, saw our presentation on ways the City of Oshkosh can save money on green initiatives in the future. And we just want to let you guys know that next week, we'll be finished with our entire synthesized report. That includes the questions you guys asked at the end. We just want you guys to know that will be for you guys to be reading sometime next week, you guys should have that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to getting it. We have consent agenda, consent agenda items. These are items on routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. First, two, report of bills filed by finance director. Two, approval of cash reports from October, November, and December 2016. Four, receipt and filing of common council minutes from March 28, 2017. Five, receipt and filing of library board minutes from March 30, 2017. Six, receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, A Peggy O'Brien, for ludge injuries from a fall on ice at the Oshkosh Celebration of Lights at Menominee Park. And we have Resolution 17-227, approved conditional use permit for light industrial use at 541 West 10th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 17-228, approve accepting easements at Atlas Avenue and Global Parkway. Plan Commission recommends approval. Seventeen, Resolution 17-229, award bid to Process Equipment Repair Services, Inc. for grid classified rehabilitation for wastewater treatment plant, $82,500. Resolution 17-230, approve purchases with Enterprise Lighting, LTLD, and Phillips Lighting, North America for lighting poles and fixtures for contract number 17-07, South Park Basin retrofit project, Resolution 17-231, amend Resolution 16-549, granting privileged street to Wisconsin Public Service for installation of soil vapor monitoring wells at 303 CP Avenue and at Court, Court Street, south of CP Avenue. Resolution 17-232, amend initial resolution for special assessments, contract number 17-22, sodus district improvements, phase one, to include grading and graveling of the street to prepare for pavement. Resolution 17-233, approve initial resolution for special assessments, contract 17-12, miscellaneous utility improvements. Resolution 17-234, approve participation International City Management Association Retire and Corporation per ins ICMA-RC closed per ins 401 governmental profit sharing plan. Resolution 17-235, approve intergovernmental agreement with Waukesha County to provide collection services for delinquent accounts receivable. Resolution 17-236, add disallow claim by Peggy O'Brien. Resolution 17-237, approve appointments to Long Range Finance and Rental, Long Range Finance Committee and Rental Housing Advisory Board. And the last resolution is 17-238, approve operator and taxicab licenses. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to any of these resolutions? I see no one coming forward, bring it back to the council for a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Roloff, 17-234. You know, I understand what this is, but, you know, it is just so the, the public understands. We're, you know, the words profit sharing plan. We're, we're a governmental entity, we're not in the profit-making business. Unless somebody's found that money that we hid someplace.
Still looking for it.
Yeah, okay. Could you just kind of explain this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. This is, is part of my contract that the council approved back in January, that there was a retention incentive put in there. The, the staff took a look at different options and identified ICMA RC. We already use that for our 457 plan, and it is technically called a 401 government profit sharing plan. I think that's just the title they use, so that's the option that staff felt was the most appropriate given council's direction to create that incentive program. This is going to be put in a trust, not payable till 2020, assuming I'm still here, and that's kind of the plan.
It's, it's the retention plan that we put together to-
Yes, it is, and I appreciate it.
Keep you here for another five years. Okay, thank you.
Give me a hand?
Oh, go ahead. 17-232, Mr. Robbie, on these special assessments, this is specific to phase one only, the grading and graveling aspect of this, right?
This is adding the grading and graveling to the initial resolution that was passed at the last council meeting. Unfortunately, when staff and I were preparing for the last meeting, we inadvertently missed grading and graveling in the initial resolution. So we needed to come back and amend that resolution to include it.
Thank you for that clarification. And then, Ms. Roloff, on 235, on the intergovernmental agreement with Waukesha County to provide collection services, that does not include collection for ambulance, correct?
Correct.
What, can you talk, talk a little bit about that, what that is?
Sure, we, this contract is for our non-ambulance-related collection services, so that, that, we have a separate contract with LifeQuest Services out of Watoma, and we've been satisfied with their service, so we did not include that in this contract.
So what are they collecting, what would Waukesha County be collecting then?
Personal property taxes, if we have bills that have been issued invoices that haven't been paid. If someone would hit a streetlight and we bill for the repairs to that, they might collect those kind of things. Those are the two easiest ones that came to the top of my head.
Those are the two most common ones.
Okay, thank you. I have a question on that same, that same item. It says in here that the term is for one year with an automatic renewal. Is it possible to bring this back before that, it needs 30 days prior to terminate the agreement? Is it possible for an update from finance to see how this is working out before we get into this automatic renewal option?
We could do that, I would ask that the council put that into the, into the instructions so that we have that officially. Because normally, if we're satisfied, staff will renew until that renewal- Because normally, if we're satisfied, staff will renew until that renewal period runs out.
Or at least just give council some sense of feedback on whether or not, you know, Trina deals with this, or you guys deal with this more often than we do. So it would just be nice to know if this is meeting our needs and if this is something that we should continue doing.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor? Just a comment on Resolution seventeen dash two-three-seven. Approve the appointments of Long Range Finance and Rental Housing. And we have several of our newly appointed rental housing board members here, so I appreciate that. My comment is just I want to thank them for taking the time and the willingness to serve on our boards and commissions. We talk about that all the time. And it's always fun to approve boards and commissions because that means the citizens of Oshkosh are stepping up and helping council. Because the role of our boards and commissions is very important to this council and the future councils, and all councils in the past and present. Because without their work on all these different topics and bringing their recommendations back, it would make it very difficult for the council to, one, get citizen input. And second, without the boards and commissions helping us, it makes it difficult to make a good decision for the citizens of Oshkosh. So appreciate them taking that opportunity. That's seven new board members. And I don't believe they've, one has served on other boards and commissions that I'm aware of since I've been on council. And the other one is someone that has served previously on other boards and commissions. So thank you.
Six new people.
Right, six new people.
And you know, and I would thank all these people for stepping forward. And Mr. Mugerhour, thanks for staying involved.
I guess we could also take this opportunity to speak to some other openings that are available. Please feel free to look at some of the other boards and commissions. There are some open spots that need filling, too. But thank you very much.
Yeah, we just had one, we just, we're filling one on Long Range and we just had one open.
I keep preaching, people, they're slowly coming forward. All right, if there are no further comments or questions from council, would the city clerk please take the role?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Piansky.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curried seven.
There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go on to pending ordinances. There is one, which is ordinance seventeen dash two-three-nine. Approve amendment to municipal building code, chapter seven dash three-four, per ins C, closed per ins, to include Department of Safety and Professional Services, chapter three-six-six. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this ordinance? I will bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Davis, are you coming forward for this? Oh, okay.
I do have a question for Mr. Davis. I think it came, well, comes from his department through Mr. Zerati. You gave us a good analysis. Could you just kind of, for those that are in the audience and those on TV and radio listening, what apparently during our audit, the state of Wisconsin found something that we needed to address? Do you want to just highlight that?
Yes, the state of Wisconsin does audit our building inspection program. And one thing they identified is our municipal code is not caught up with state code. The state code actually split buildings into existing and new buildings. And we just referenced the both together. And they asked us to separate that and adopt both state codes separately. So we're adopting this existing building code to satisfy the state requirements.
Okay, so for those commercial developers out there, there's no change or increase in cost or increase in doing business?
No.
It's just modifying our?
Our code to match the state code. And we've always used the state code for construction, building code requirements.
Okay, very good, thank you.
There's no new code being adopted.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Would you, thank you, Mr. Davis. Would you please take a role?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Piansky.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curried seven.
We have two new ordinances, and there will not be action taken on either one at this meeting. The first is ordinance seventeen dash two-four-zero. Designate bicycle lanes and modify parking regulations to restrict parking on west side of West Haven Drive from Ninth Avenue to Patriot Lane. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this ordinance? Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
No, there's no action.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. But you do want to speak, Mr. Collins?
Yes, I just wanted to explain, show you a couple maps, just show you what this is, just so you have an idea, you know, so you can vote on it next meeting. But this is, this map I just put up here is basically, it'll show you where our current bike lanes are and then where this proposed bike lane is. So if you can see on the map, this is the West Haven circle area, and it's already a marked bike route. So what we're, and this comes from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, what they're proposing is bike lanes on West Haven from West Ninth up to Patriot Lane. So it'll be, it's a connection of what's already in the West Haven neighborhood. Eventually, the DOT has plans to do a multimodal trail on twenty-one in more distant future. But the Bike and Pedestrian Committee thought this would be a good connection to connect up to the hospitals and the shopping up in that area. And it is part of the 2011 Bike and Pedestrian Plan. So I just wanted to show you that real quickly. And then, basically, this map here shows you what the current parking situation is in that area. So there's currently no parking Monday through Friday in this area between West Ninth and Abbey Avenue on both sides. So in order to fit two bike lanes in, what we would have to remove is the parking on the west side from West Ninth Avenue to Abbey Lane. It's already prohibited Monday through Friday, so it would just be Saturday and Sunday. So you're talking about, I calculated maybe thirty-three possible parking spots on the weekend in that area is what we'd be talking about. So this is, you can kind of get a picture of what it currently looks like. There also, you'd be losing parking up in this area. However, I've never seen anybody parked in that area. And when we took it to the boards, nobody had any objections to that at all. So this is what the parking would look like. So that purple line parking would be removed on that side of the road. You'd still be able to park on the east side of the road where the yellow line is on weekends. So there's still some parking in that area. I know there was some possible concerns from St. Rayfield's. But overall, though, there's still, in our opinion, quite a bit of parking available in the lot. And then also, there's no restrictions on Abbey Avenue. And there's also parking on the east side. So that's just for your information. I just thought I'd show you those maps since we had them available.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions? All right, on to ordinance seventeen dash two-four-one. Approve a zone change from RH dash thirty-five Rural Holding District to HI Heavy Industrial District for property located north of Atlas Avenue and east of Global Parkway, southwest industrial park. Plan Commission recommends approval.
I just have a question, Mr. Roloff. I know we're not taking action at this time. This is for the transload station?
Mr. Burridge is.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, because there were a couple of these on there. So you're, it's kind of a trick question for me, but Mr. Burridge can handle it quite well.
This is related to the transload site, correct?
Okay.
The transload site will enter down in this area. But this is a, there's a pond also in this area.
Okay. Are we, are we ready to go? I mean, is this project ready to go once this is approved? Or is there still a lot of, because my thinking is, is that if it's ready to go and it's just changing and they're waiting for two more weeks, but they could start next week, why not approve it now?
We can't start that quick. We still got to get the wetland permit from DNR. And there's a couple of other things that we got to tie up some loose ends with DOT on the grant. So we're probably, I'm hoping to award a bid in early summer here. I think we can have all the contracts signed here in May.
Okay, so this is just another procedural process to the finish line?
Yep, we just needed to make sure we did it before the transload facility broke ground. And we're going to beat that by a month or so.
I'm sure we got the wrong DOT guys here tonight. Move it along, right?
Different part of DOT.
So Alan, is this dotting an I or crossing a T?
I'd probably say it's just matching the zoning with the comprehensive plan. How's that?
And that is just for that site, right? We're not doing kind of a general area?
Everything else is already zoned industrial, so.
But heavy industrial, right?
Yes, and, yeah, so it's matching the rest of the industrial park. I'm told that the city bought this piece separate from the rest of the industrial park. So that's why it didn't get caught when it was, all the industrial park was zoned originally.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? We now have new resolutions. The first is Resolution seventeen dash two-four-two, which is provide recommendation, and I emphasize the word recommendation, to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation in per ins W of DOT, closed per ins for Jackson Oregon Street Bridge. Now, I'm sure there'll be people from the public that want to speak. I think we will do is allow public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. And please keep your comments to five minutes. I need your name and address. So if there's more than one, you know, just please line up so we can keep this moving.
Hi, councilmembers. Peter Lang, 2300 White Swan Drive. I'm a member of the Morgan District. I'm here again to express support in favor of an on-axis drawbridge replacement. I have previously expressed opposition to the High Line flyover alternative. I believe that the scale and structure of that bridge is not fitting in with our downtown and the investments that we've made into Riverwalk and that have come along with downtown redevelopment efforts. I'm aware that the DOT has provided you with some illustrations. I think the scale of that structure is not as clear as it will be when you're actually standing next to it. Twenty-one foot high retaining wall going to the road level surface will certainly present a challenge as we seek to develop our riverfront property. We are hopeful and appreciate your continued support as we work through that process. I think that scale of structure really, really impacts us as we go through to develop our pro forma for rents on first floor retail, which would be obscured all the way back five hundred feet from the south of the river. As we go through to develop a pro forma for rents, when we have traffic lights that'll be shining in third floor windows, and the impacts to that are something that we are trying to wrap our head around. I talked before about view corridors for our retail partner. I think certainly that plays into it. If you were to ask the impact to two brothers, I'm willing to bet that that overpass impacted them when that was put in. That's on the scale of what you're talking about, putting in the central city with the flyover bridge. I hope you will consider, in addition to cost, the character and community of the central city. So thank you, I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this ordinance?
My name is Kurt Kepler. I live at seventeen twenty-six River Mill Road. I am one of the managing partners and owners of City Center. And there are several concerns that we have, which I'd appreciate it if you take into consideration when you make your final decision. First and foremost is that our ramp that exits on Jackson Street is, in event of an emergency, that's our primary, one of our primary exits. We only have two exits from the ramp. And in event of an evacuation, we would have to use that to get people out. That's twelve hundred cars that we would have to get off the deck and evacuate the property as soon as possible. And if you take that into consideration, there is one drawing that shows a cul-de-sac or a roundabout, or, and I'm not sure what they call it, but it would impact us getting our tenants out of the building in the event of an evacuation. Second thing is, we have fifteen thousand square feet of future development in that area. And without exiting properly, that would impact whether we would in fact develop that property. My last thing I'd like you to consider is that this flyover bridge would severely impact exposure to our tenants, primarily Beckett's Restaurant, which is a staple from downtown. It would be difficult for them to get in and out. There would be a loss of parking. And we're very concerned about that for our current tenants and the possibility for future tenants. So when you decide on the bridge, I'd appreciate if you take that into consideration. We've invested millions of dollars in the city center. We think it's a showplace for Oshkosh. And we don't want to have that impacted by a high bridge that would block off our exposure. Thank you. Any questions?
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this resolution? I will bring it back to the council for discussion. I'll make a few opening statements. You know, this is a multi-multi-million dollar project that the state DOT will pay for, but we're all taxpayers. So this is a, the price tag is, depending on the selection, into the area, thirty-five million dollars. Whatever bridge we select will be here for seventy-five years. I think the one concern we have is if it's a new bridge, we, the city of Oshkosh, and the citizens, will pick up the tab for maintenance for the life of the bridge, assuming the DOT does not change their method of doing business. You know, I've made a statement on a lot of occasions, a bridge can, in many cases, does become a focal point for a community. Think of the communities you've visited. And we have the tourism people here, a number of those communities use the bridge as kind of a draw. It's a symbol of that city. Another thing we haven't discussed, the life of the existing bridges in the city. You know, whatever design is, again, this is a recommendation. The DOT can do pretty much as they please, regardless of what we have to say. You know, what is the future of the existing bridges? That type of question. So whatever we select, would that become sort of the pattern for future bridge reconstruction? I think the entire council has heard from members of the community, as many options as there are, there are opinions. I had an elderly lady call me yesterday who lived in Fond du Lac and moved here and talked about the problems Fond du Lac had with the trains until the city decided to put a bridge over all the trains and has done the same thing. So there's a lot of interest on this. There's a lot of opinions. And the decision we make, as much as time as we've spent and labored over this, the DOT could very easily do their own thing. So with that, we'll move on to council discussion. I would move for the approval of, to get it on the floor, seventeen dash two-four-two.
Mr. Bill Bertrand from the DOT is here. He's a gentleman who you spoke with at your work session a while back. So he's here to answer questions. Just, Mr. Bertrand and I, we've consistently had discussions about the funding issue. That's not his area. His area is really about the structure and the design and everything.
Simple question. You're asking for our input?
Yes.
What does the DOT take for our input? At the end of the day, you make the decisions, correct? How much is our, is our input actually weighed?
Uh, we said all along that the city of Oshkosh input will have significant impact in our decision. Ultimately, though, the responsibility for the final decision does reside with the D O T. So it will have significant impact. I can't give you a percent specific on what that is, but it certainly will have significant impact on the final decision. Uh, if you vote for a specific replacement option, obviously, we recognize with the state statute eighty-four-ten that the ownership and future maintenance does transfer to the city of Oshkosh, so certainly if the city is assuming ownership and maintenance of a future bridge, uh, then, yes, certainly, and we would feel that, that your input in preference would have impact in our decision.
Remote operations of a opening bridge, is this considered, is, is this part, are these designed to be remote, remote operations, or will they have to be manned?
There are no plans for remote operations for the bridges in Oshkosh. Currently, there are remote operations in Manasha and Sturgeon Bay. We're looking at it in the Green Bay area right now. There are no plans currently within, uh, our program to expand that into Oshkosh.
Why not?
Uh, they're, they're working out issues right now with it, uh, and they want to work out things in Green Bay and get them working, uh, with agency approval before they would look at, uh, bringing anything down to Oshkosh.
Agency approval, would that be the D O T?
Coast Guard, I mean, other.
Coast Guard, okay. But they're already working in, you say they're already working in other?
There are Racine and Tackle Street Bridges in Manasha and then in Sturgeon Bay.
And why, and, and, so what's keeping it from being used here?
Uh, I can't speak specifically, I mean, on that, because they would be within our region bridge area, uh, but I've been in contact with them and have been advised that there are no plans to implement that in Oshkosh, uh, and they want to, uh, continue and get things implemented correctly in Green Bay, uh, before that they would ever look at continuing that.
But they're, but they're already working in, you, no, wait.
There's challenges in every.
But are they already working in, Nina, or Manasha?
They are working between Racine Street and, uh, Tackle Street Bridges in Manasha.
Why wouldn't that, why couldn't we use the same?
Again, and I can't comment specifically on that, not being from the region bridge section. I've just been told that they will not be. I could certainly follow up and get information back through James and Mark. I'm on that, our region bridge section.
That doesn't help us on this decision tonight. Uh, you know, and again, you know, and I understand, you're just the messenger, so I'm not coming, attacking you, please understand that. But the thing is, is that, you know, we often hear local control from the people down in Madison, and every time I hear local control coming from Madison, I reach for my, well, the city's checkbook, because I know it's going to cost us more money. So at the end of the day, if I hear everything correctly, even though the input has been asked, the input will be considered, but that, still at the end of the day, whatever the state decides to do, the state's going to do.
Ultimately, the final decision resides with the D O T, yes, on that. Uh, we went through a similar situation in city Manasha and looking at the Racine Street Bridge improvement, uh, the city gave us their recommendation. We gave it strong consideration, and in that situation, we agreed and went with the recommendation that the city of Manasha preferred for Racine Street.
And that was with?
Uh, they looked at a bridge, uh, basket bridge replacement on new alignment, uh, for the Racine Street Bridge in Oshkosh. That's in, currently scheduled to begin construction in two thousand.
You said the Racine, Racine Street Bridge has the, the, um...
Remote operations?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, they do, uh, the bridge in Racine Street, though, is, is old, uh, even older than the Oregon-Jackson in Oshkosh, I believe it was nineteen fifty-two that that was constructed. So again, it's approaching the useful life of a lift bridge on that, so we looked at either major rehabilitation or a replacement as viable.
So the bridge hasn't been built yet?
The bridge in, the new bridge in Racine Street, Manasha, is currently scheduled in two thousand twenty to begin construction. The existing bridge, both between Tackle and Racine, do operate on remote operation.
So, but the bridge that's supposed to be built in two thousand twenty has remote operation. This bridge is not going to be built in two thousand twenty-two?
Correct.
So if we can do something in two thousand twenty, why can't we do it in two thousand twenty-two?
There are challenges, and again, I'm, uh, not being, uh, in the bridge section in our region. I don't know specifically what challenges we're facing with agency coordination in Green Bay, uh, but I know in talking with them that they are not planning, uh, at all to look at it in Oshkosh.
Okay, well, then, and, and, and I'm just going to ask a question here. Obviously, this is a pretty big decision that's going to be made tonight, and there's no information here where we can say we're going to do this in the, in, in Manasha, but we didn't consider it in Oshkosh, even for a bridge that's going to be built later. So, um, I'm looking to say, let's bring these people, uh, I would like to get this information, and so we can truly make a decision. And I would like to find out why the D O T is not considering remote operation for a bridge that's going to be built after another bridge that will have remote operation.
In the absence of knowing, of that information, what Mr. Robbie prepared for you, it's, uh, towards the bottom of page three of the staff report, uh, he and his staff did an analysis of five years of bridge operating costs for the bridges in Winnebago County, four of which are in Oshkosh, one of which is in Winnet County. Uh, James, do you want to just kind of go over your methodology with that?
Yeah, which table are you looking at?
This table, that's one of, yeah, that one right there.
Um, yeah, the, the information on the operating costs was actually provided to us by the D O T, um, as, uh, city manager noted for the four bridges here in Oshkosh and the Winnet County Bridge. Um, it was for years, two thousand eleven through two thousand fifteen. Um, as, as I noted, the, uh, two thousand fifteen Main Street, um, maintenance here in Oshkosh, uh, did seem significantly higher than everything else. Um, so I had asked, um, Mr. Bertrand if he could get me some information on that. The reason that particular one kind of jumped out was because there was some more significant longer-term activities that had taken place that kind of skewed that number. Um, in particular, replacement of the air horn, um, Faith Technologies doing electro, electronic upgrades, uh, to the monitor system and the control system, and then also some, um, deteriorated covering over the arms. But looking at the, uh, average for two thousand fifteen and two thousand fourteen, without that one outlying number, it was about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars on average.
And I, if I, just because I'm still on this line of questioning, if I may, but these are manned bridges?
Yes, they are.
And the question is related to remote operation bridges? So we don't have that particular cost.
And I guess we don't have that cost because they're not incorporating it in the program.
No.
So we're not going to get that cost because they're not going to build a bridge in Oshkosh that's remotely controlled?
Well, the question I have is, is if, if there's a discussion to build a bridge in two thousand twenty in our county with, with, with remote operations, this, apparently the state feels that that...
There are issues and challenges working with new bridges and getting it. I don't have the specific information on it, uh, but I know there are challenges they're working through in Green Bay right now, and they said they will not, uh, pursue it in Oshkosh with the bridges in downtown Oshkosh.
James.
Then, then it doesn't give me a whole lot of, uh, comfort with the, uh, the decision that's going to be made, that, you know, we'll take your input, but we're still, we're still, we're the experts, so we're going to be the ones that are going to make the decision. So, okay.
Mr. Perry, I'm sorry.
Uh, James, on that removal of that outlier, those horn, uh, and arms and additional longer-term fixes, why would we remove that? Because wouldn't that be an expected cost of normal maintenance or wear and tear eventually?
Eventually, yes, it would. Keeping it in, it, it was an average across all the bridges of about a hundred and forty-seven thousand, so it was in a similar ballpark. It was just, um, you know, it jumped out at me because it did, um, you know, seem to be a bit of an outlier, so I had, I had, as I was authoring the memo, I had, I surmised that there was, um, some major things, and that was something I was able to confirm yesterday.
But those are things over the life? I think the point's valid that those types of things...
Yeah, I don't think we should remove that.
Horn would, a horn would be a natural expense. Would it happen the first few years? No, because it's a new bridge and everything like that. But I think these numbers that James shows you are on the low side, and they will continue to increase over time, whether it's a horn that needs replaced or the, the cost of a bridge tender goes up and things like that. You're going to see those, those costs, uh, increase over time.
One of the frustrations has been, and I have asked on, I think, four separate occasions, at the R D A meeting, Land Commission meeting, at least twice in the council, what is it going to look like? And we, we don't really get good renderings that tell us what it's going to look like. There's no relation to height with other, along the riverfront. We're being asked to make a recommendation, a multi-million dollar recommendation that will be around for seventy-five years, and we don't know where we're getting, what we're getting. We don't know what it looks like. I assume it would be a plain Jane, but whatever that means, a plain bridge. If we want to do anything to enhance it architecturally, the citizens of Oshkosh will be responsible for that work, design work, and whatever else is involved. I think it's very difficult to make it at this magnitude of a decision when we don't know what we're buying. It's like building a house that you don't have, you know, a floor plan or design. It's like, just build me a two thousand square foot house. I mean, I think we'd be irresponsible until we get really what we've been asking for, I mean, repeatedly and repeatedly and repeatedly, and we're not getting it.
The renderings that were provided are very good approximations in order to compare the impacts of a high-level fix versus a basket bridge with...
If you're a seagull.
Or if you're looking at it from this portion of the bridge.
Correct. The renderings are from a specific vantage point. They are not panoramic flights or any of, of that nature. The cost involved in that is extremely significant.
You've asked, you know, from the, from the vantage point of a boater, someone on a bicycle, someone walking, someone driving a car, um, and we've asked, you know, through the, the magic of computers, you can morph a riverfront what we think it might look like in the next twenty-five, fifty years, so we have an idea of what we're looking at as we, as we go down the river and drive over the bridge. And I don't, at least to my satisfaction, I haven't seen anything that answers my question.
I mean, we're, we're being asked to buy something off a menu that we can't see the menu. As, as the gentleman earlier tonight spoke of the, the development at, at the Morgan District and the impact that this is going to have on that particular district, that's information that we've requested from the D O T, is how is this going to look from that vantage point? Um, we haven't seen anything, how it's going to look from the vantage point of, uh, Mr., Mr. Kepler's tenants and the city center. You know...
The two views that were most recently provided, one is from the southwest area in the Morgan District property, the other is from the northeast quadrant over in the city center area. We asked specifically for the city staff to provide us those photos so that we could provide renderings from them. Uh, we initially had, uh, provided, uh, larger, more aerial vantage points on that. Uh, there was a desire from the city to get ground-level renderings. Uh, we asked them to provide us the specific photos that they wanted us to provide those renderings of. We were given those and provided those renderings last week, uh, early last week on that. So what we've been requested, that we have provided from a rendering standpoint, to go to a, a full aerial flyover type thing is extremely expensive. Uh, there's federal and state dollars involved in that, uh, and at this point in looking at, uh, the early and conceptual nature of the design, uh, to go, again, uh, to that is considerable expenditure, and there are a lot of final design decisions that influence how a bridge would look. We're giving a, a, a good and general view, uh, of what the rendering will look like in the final condition. Uh, we can certainly tell you, I mean, relative to on the south shore, uh, a basket or new basket bridge would be roughly six feet higher than the existing bridge is from the roadway level right now. A, uh, a high-level fixed bridge would be fourteen feet roughly, and again, that's based on, uh, twenty-three-foot clearance over the channel, the navigation channel, which hasn't been completely validated with the Coast Guard yet, but that's, we're comfortable based on the prior Interstate Forty-One project over the causeway area that twenty-three feet was used there, uh, and, and that's a, a, a number we're comfortable with at this point in looking at. But, uh, again, we've got those numbers, uh, we've given the renderings, uh, from the vantage points that have been requested by the city, uh, with the cost involved in doing a flyover, uh, that's more certainly, uh, than what we would look at as far as wise use of funds, uh, in order to get into that. The, the renderings do give, uh, a good visual representation of the vantage points that we asked and were provided for from the city staff.
So then, it, okay.
Just a question, is there something, and I know no, um, no two situations are the same, but is there anything that's currently built that's in the state that would be, you know, anywhere even approximately size-wise that is in existence right now?
Or even out of state?
Uh, that's my, I mean, I can't off the top of my head say exactly if you're looking at a high-level fixed, uh, no, I know in Winnet County, we will be building a high-level fixed.
I mean, something that's...
Likely starting next year, but, but nothing that is in place that comes to mind that would be specifically close to what you're looking at here.
Okay.
It's just a follow-up question. So, is, if I heard you correctly, you, you're still waiting? You, you, you said you don't know if the fourteen-foot clearance is enough?
We're comfortable based on, on the status of our coordinate, that the twenty-three foot would be a clearance that would be acceptable to the Coast Guard on the navigation channel, uh, that was used for the Interstate Forty-One project, uh, just to the west as well.
So then the design is not finalized yet?
Uh, I would say none of the designs, again, we're at a conceptual stage. There's always tweaks to any design that would be made going forward on that, which is why when we look at the renderings right now, uh, the intent is to communicate a general picture of what the appearance will look like and the visual impact to, from the south side, looking at the Morgan property to the northeast, and then vice versa from the opposite quadrant, looking back to the southwest on that.
So, so we think, what we, we think what we've showed you, and I'm, I'm, the state thinks that what they've showed the city of Oshkosh is what that, pretty close to what that final bridge could be, but it may change depending on what the Coast Guard says, correct?
As, as you work through preliminary design, there's always a possibility that there may be a slight change. That's going to be very close, uh, to what it would be, and we're comfortable and confident that the twenty-three feet is the clearance that would be approved, given that it was approved, again, on the Interstate Forty-One project just to the west.
If, if, if we were to delay this two weeks so that we could have someone come and explain to us, or to get the additional information about remote operation, about why it can't be done, or what it is that, why the state is not considering it, would that have a significant impact on this project if we waited two weeks, a month?
Quite honestly, we're about two months or more behind our original schedule. I mean, any time is significant, I mean, from a delay standpoint.
And why is it behind schedule?
Uh, well, we originally had looked to get a decision from the city council back in, uh, late January, early Feb, or February timeframe.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, one of the February meetings was the original schedule.
And at that time, no additional information was requested, correct?
There was a desire to get additional renderings, uh, on that, so we provided those renderings, uh, from the ground level.
Hi, Mr. Bertrand, and I'm sure you can answer this. Even if we picked one of the bridges, a lift bridge, whether it's being opened by an, by a computer or opened by a conductor, that bridge would basically be the same bridge, right? It would just be a matter of how it got open and closed, correct? The different style of bridge, if we picked one of these lift bridges, whether it's, you know, alternative F or whatever, any of the lift bridges, it, it would be built the same, whether it was manually operated by a computer or a person in the bridge house.
Correct.
So, picking a bridge doesn't really have anything to do with whether it's remotely operated or bridge tender operated.
Correct. The only difference is in the future operational condition.
Okay, on, on, on that note, um, you heard quite a few of our gentlemen, business people in the community, obviously City Center and Morgan Properties, which are the two most impacted. The renderings are, are nice, and I am, I remember being at the dedication of the Forty-One Bridge and everything, it was beautiful, but the put-in perspective, because we... But to put it in perspective, because we can't quite see it. I don't know if your engineer could tell us or you could tell us. But as we're coming up to the river, how much concrete are we looking at? I mean, how high is that thing going to be? Is it going to be 20 feet in the air as we get to that 23 foot center span? You know, just how high is it going to be concrete as I walk down the Riverwalk? Am I looking like this at concrete like I do when I go to Two Brothers and sit by the window? And I'm looking at all that concrete? Is that what I'm going to see at city center? Is that what a tenant that might build or build something at Morgan Properties is going to be looking at 20 feet high concrete, solid concrete? Is that what they're going to be looking at as it comes up?
The retaining wall itself, right at the, the Riverwalk area would be roughly 20 feet high. It would taper down under the high level alternative. Within 500 feet, it would taper down to.
Sure.
Wall would be ending. So you'd start 20 feet.
So taping it back, we would, we would almost be starting the approach to the bridge probably, I can't remember names of streets in there off the top of my head, but like by, not as far back as Hardee's or anything, would we?
No, if you take a look at the, Jake's showing the, the.
Different rendering.
Lift bridge right now. But the landing spot is about where Marion Road is on the north side.
Okay.
And that's why, under the fix, and I'm talking about under the, the fixed bridge concept. That would, that's why the chamber building would be taken out. On the south side, it would land at the same ground level before it got to Sixth.
Roughly 150 to 200 feet to the north of Sixth.
Yeah.
So the highest concrete walling, if you want to call that, or it looks like you do landscaping to cover up some of the concrete, would be basically 100 feet one way or the other from the river on each side of the bridge, roughly, or maybe less.
Let me try to understand your question.
Well, the fixed bridge is what, is their concern the most right now is the fixed bridge as it impacts, potentially impacts their businesses. So I'm trying to get a flavor of just, if I was walking on the Riverwalk, what am, what am I looking at? Walls and walls of concrete?
Yeah, I think the idea here, and Jake zoomed in on it for you. This is the, the city center perspective. It's more open, but as the, as you get, you can't really see it on this visual. You can see it more on the south side, the one from the, from the Morgan District that the, there's a retaining wall. And, and as we put in the report, 20 feet's about one and a half stories. And you can, if you take a look at the other one, Jake, if you put the other perspective on, the reason I, I wanted to show you that was because there's a stairway that takes you from the bridge down to the street level. And there's about two and a half. Flights, thank you, of stairway there. So that gives you a rough idea of what, how far it is. I also checked with Mr. Davis in terms of, and I'm only talking about the Morgan site at this point. We would probably, with parking lots and what we've seen conceptually, you're probably about 120 feet from the bridge to the building. So you're much farther away than you would be, say, on the north side where city center's already there. But you can see the, if you can zoom in there a little bit, Jake, you can see that stairways have also been superimposed on that. And you can see about two and a half flights of stairs. So that's why I said it was a story and a half. That, that's why I was trying to, to give some perspective to everybody. But you can get an idea of, of how that is. And Mr. Bertrand said it was about 20 feet. That seems about right for about.
20 feet at the Riverwalk and then tapering as you continue back away from the water.
What about ADA accessibility with that flight of stairs?
Well, that's.
Anything would be, and again, the renderings are conceptual. They may not exactly correspond to ADA on that. They would be constructed ADA, certainly compliant with that. Again, the design would be tweaked. It's in a conceptual design phase right now, preliminary. So they're certainly, as you go through, they would be ADA compliant at construction. Absolutely.
Go back to council personnel, Lasby's question. Have you, have you, the DOT built bridges similar, similar to these proposals anywhere in the state? Or are you aware of comparable bridges in other parts of the country? Most of our cities are located on rivers. I'm trying to figure out which bridge in Sturgeon Bay is remotely operated, not the old one.
I, I believe it would be the Oregon Maple with Michigan.
They're both remotely operated, one from one down to the other.
Yeah. I believe Oregon Maple has the control.
At your point, the one bridge is in the 1890s and it can be remotely retrofitted with remote operation.
I, I don't, I, I'm having a hard time understanding how we can have remotely operated bridges someplace.
My understanding is from an agency approval, that they stopped giving approval to future remote ops and that's what they're working through right now.
So basically what you're saying is Manasha was grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. The, the, the comment earlier about having to evacuate city center. When we look at that, how that is flowing, that particular where that would exit, what is now going on to Jackson Street, that would exit on to the, the division, I believe, the changed division street. That's only going to be, that's only right in, right out. You go, if you, if you go to the right and for, and send people evacuating to the right.
There you go, Mr. Peck.
They're going to be coming, you're also going to be having people who are coming out of the, the parking lot from the other exit, going this, basically making a left. You're going to have people going right into each other. Was that taken into, was evacuation of a very large building taken into account related to this?
We need to provide a safe design for it, given the location of that and its spacing between the Jackson Street intersection there. It would not be safe to allow a median opening. So the right in, right access, right in, right out access coming out of the Coliseum area provides the safest access. Then you would come down division.
Now, the question was, was it considered, was evacuating city center at full capacity part of this design process?
From it is, it would be considered, but in providing a safe design, allowing that median opening would not be a safe situation. So we would need to close it up and provide the right in, right out access at that location.
I'm, I'm going to try one more time.
Was it considered? Yes.
Was.
But we need to provide a safe design for 99% of the time, well, 99% plus of the time out there. You can still do that. And if you would need to take it out right in, right out, that is the opportunity.
Okay, I, I got a few more comments to make at a later date, at a later point, but.
Councilman Paul Mary has some questions.
Actually, yes. So one of our options was to refurbish the, the existing bridge. I, I personally don't feel like we've been given any really good options and at least that address our community needs. You know, we have four bridges within a couple of miles of each other and this gets quite a bit of use. Would I love to be able to create pedestrian bike friendly crossing and have continuity for our Riverwalks. I walk that area quite a bit with my husband and it's like playing Frogger to get across. But I guess my, my one question is if we go that route, you know, it, it does move us out 25, 30 years actually, if you factor in the five year delay in actual work. Would the state be amenable to assisting us with designing some improved pedestrian and bike crossing access on either side? And that would be assuming that the Morgan District and the city center would be amenable to cooperating with something of that nature. Would the state be looking at, no, you're on your own in terms of anything additional to that?
Oregon Jackson is a local street. So really the limits of whatever improvement project we do to the bridge is determined on a rehab would be just within the actual bridge itself, would not extend outside of the bridge. Under a replacement option, then the touchdown limits, I mean, extend out and would include the potential pedestrian crossings or Riverwalk combinations on that. One of the things that, that we've talked about, we had early coordination with the local community, with city officials, with the public on identifying what are the local needs really that needed to be addressed or that felt needed to be addressed by the project. Certainly multimodal combinations across the bridge was one of the, the strong needs expressed, both for bicyclists as well as pedestrians. Navigation clearance was mentioned as well. Minimizing impact to development, I mean, certainly out there. But again, the limits of the project, within those limits, we can certainly address the improvements as we're able to. Under rehabilitation option, there's no changes to bridge cross section, bridge width. There's no change to navigation clearance. It's, it's really addressing the electrical mechanical issues that need rehabilitation in order to continue operating the existing bridge that 25 year period.
You know, we frequently get these, it's either all or nothing kinds of issues presented to us. I don't like that. I'll just say that. I don't like that. It, it lacks creativity. It, it feels like a one size, you know, fits all. So I, I would, I would lean Tori, asking for more time and more detail to come back with, as Mr., as Councilmember Heck mentioned, more information, more details. On the other hand, if our contributions and our many people who have weighed in on this through the various boards and commissions, you know, if the determination is already predetermined, that's frustrating too.
The DOT has not made a predetermination as far as a preferred alternative here. We are here asking the city preference. And as we said, the city preference will certainly be given strong consideration when we evaluate it. The project is being funded by federal and state tax dollars and we're the stewards of those federal and state tax dollars. So ultimately, we are responsible to make the decision in the best interest of that.
Yeah, I under, I understand that, but you've also got a transportation budget that is a, a basket case at the state level. And we're looking at the difference between $35 million and $14 million. I got to tell you something, my gut tells me, I know no matter what we say, I know where this is going to go.
If I may. I know that you say that you, you know, there's nothing, concrete or set in stone. But is there something that you, you guys honestly really would prefer us to choose? Which is kind of a really nice way of just saying like, you know, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, is there something that you guys, in your mind, is saying, we want you guys to pick this? Because if there was, then we could say, you know, what is your rationale?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We have to follow through the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act process to evaluate all of the alternatives and give them equal weight through that. We're following through that process.
Right.
And, and given that this is within the local downtown community, we're looking for the city of Oshkosh input on what you would prefer as an option. And we will consider that certainly and consider it strongly when we go back to our office and meet to determine ultimately what would be the preferred alternative in our environmental documents.
And I certainly appreciate that, you know, and I hope that you can see from, from our, our standpoint, this is really a very difficult decision to make because it's right in the heart of, of Oshkosh. And because it is something, I mean, it's, it's a decision. Mark Roloff and I had a, had a good conversation and, you know, I said, you know, the baby's kind of ugly. Because there, to Lori's point, there, there's not, there's not one option that jumps out that just says this is really the best way to go. Because if we keep the existing bridge, then it's kind of almost like our infrastructure in the city, you know, and it's kicking the can down the road. And, you know, what does that mean for future council, city managers, business owners and the community to, to put this out 30 years? And then what happens if, you know, the state, there's no state and federal funds and then somehow a municipality has to, to come up with that? And we don't know. We don't have a crystal ball. You know, the other, the other thing that we have is also too, you know, and, and I just mean this as a fact and nothing personal to the businesses. But, you know, we don't know, is Beckett's in the city center going to be there 50 years from now? You know, we don't even know if the Morgan District, I mean, at this point, there's no current development. So we're also trying to make a decision when there's going to be a huge amount of change that's going to go on over the next 10, 20, 50, 75 years. And again, we don't have a crystal ball. So it's just, I, I know you're sensing our frustration and I hope you know it's nothing personal. But this really is, it's probably, when, when you look at the magnitude of this and where it's impacting us in the city, this decision that we make is really long lasting. I mean, it's, and it's not something we can fix if we pick the wrong option. We can't fix it. So, you know, that's where I think, you know, that's where the real challenge lies. And, you know, with, with the Riverwalk and the city there, it's, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful part and it's a beautiful part of what we're developing as we run, look for like, you know, to the Sawdust District, which is, you know, down a little bit further off of Main Street. So it really is, is a challenge and we're not trying to make your life miserable. It may seem that way right now, but we're, we're really not. It's just, it's such an important, important decision and there's just no, no good answer.
Yeah, I have another question. Yeah, I mean, I, I, that was some of the points I wanted to make. I mean, there's three decisions here, there's three options here. None of them are good. None of them are good. And no matter which one we choose, at the local level, we're going to be wrong. But the kicker is, it doesn't, at the end of the day, and I heard the word track, we're seeking your input. But it, and you even admitted, at the end of the day, the decision is made in Madison. So why are you even asking us? If our input is not a significant, highly valued, highly viewed in the decision. Yeah, Oshkosh, we want to hear from you, but at the end of the day, sorry, we're going to make the decision.
And I did say the city of Oshkosh preference would be given significant weight in our decision.
Define significant.
And again, I can't tell you whether that's.
So then, so then.
What percent that is.
Where, who makes the decision? Where is the decision made? At what level? Who do we go and pound knots on heads to say, if you're asking us to do this, then this is the one we want?
The region, we, we have a meeting within our region toward the end of the month and we will factor the city preference in if we get the city council vote on that. And we will make the decision at, at that region meeting.
One other question too, in regards budget, because this is federal and state money. If we, if we say, let's go with a $35 million option. And this project is off four or five years. What are the chances of budgets getting cut that we're told? You can't have that bridge. You only have 10 million to spend. Is that a possibility? Has that happened before?
It hasn't happened before. I can't comment on, on future state budgets or anything in that regard.
Know that.
We can tell you that within our, our six year program, that there is money that is available for replacement bridge.
But we, we have CIPs too that go off five years and things don't always come to pass because of one thing or the other.
A Mount Vernon Street deciding that it's going to. I would just say from my experience, because Mr. Bertrand's been taking a lot of hits there tonight and, you know, he's been very cooperative and very helpful with us. The complexity of a bridge, you have to commit early because that's why they're here tonight. The design, when would we even see the first hint of a design bill? Couple of years?
Again, we would have to, if, if you're talking design of the actual bridge, you're talking more finalized concept for the approaches. I mean, all is different. A bascule bridge is very complex. We probably wouldn't see bascule bridge plans until 2021.
So we're still a few years away. There's a lot of work that gets done. It's, it's a lot more complex than it is to, to.
Build a street.
Do some basic street and utilities.
We have a question over here from.
Is it, it's Bertrand?
Yeah.
Mr. Bertrand. How many communities have you gone through this process within the last couple of years?
Within the last couple of years, the city of Manasha, sort of, we're continuing to work through the Racine Street Bridge Project. So that one is currently. through the Racine Street Bridge project. So that one is currently scheduled for 2020. In the Village of Winnicott, we are looking at a high-level fixed bridge there that will start construction later this year, currently scheduled to start construction.
So you've worked with two communities and then us?
Correct.
Okay, so with the other two communities, with how, with the input that you got from their, you know, their township or their city, did you guys follow that recommendation? Or did you go in a different direction?
In Manasha, which I was directly involved in that portion of it, we followed their recommendation on that. Winnicott, I can't comment because I wasn't involved in the environmental study for that one. I picked that one up after the environmental study was done. So I wasn't involved in...
Can I ask a question to the council? We seem to be frustrated. We all seem to think we're lacking some information. Would it be prudent on our part to put this off to the next council meeting, put together a list of things we really wanna see to help us make a very clear decision? Again, this is a multimillion-dollar, 75-year commitment on the part of the council for the City of Oshkosh.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'm having a hard time because I hear, you know, related to Ms. Allison Osby's comments about, we're making a decision that's gonna affect us for many, many years, and we don't know what's gonna happen in the Morgan District. Mr. Bertrand, you just indicated that we won't even see, that plans, like where we can really say, this is what it's gonna look like. They're not even gonna be available until 2021. So another four years from now.
And these decisions need to be made now in order to get to the point where you've got those plans four years from now, quite honestly. The issue really, and it's difficult at times to comprehend and understand the process that needs to be followed. We need to make the decision to get an environmental document approved. That follows into developing a real estate plat where we apply our real estate on. The real estate process can take up to two years at times to complete that. Then we need to relocate utilities in advance of construction. All that takes time to happen. So if the decisions now don't happen, such that we can move forward with the selection of an alternative leading to the environmental document, then all the rest of the stuff, four to five years in the future, is not gonna happen on schedule either.
Captain Mayor Herman?
Yep. Just briefly comment. I think I was involved in the very beginning with this project, and then all, to quite a few of the meetings, I think, you know, we were given a document by Mr. Roby. They basically have focused on the three bridges that the community has looked at and accepted. Some of the other groups have approved and looked at them. Our boards and commissions, which we talked about tonight, how important they are to us, have weighed in. I, you know, I agree, I would like to see more, but the state's at a point where they can't wait for us. And if we continue to push it down the road, they're just gonna build what they feel is the appropriate bridge. And yet, we have to weigh in what our developers on the river are saying. So, you know, I want bicycle pedestrian there. I wanna continue to grow a Riverwalk. I wanna control, continue to grow a riverfront. I think we, as a council, need to say either A, B, or C tonight. Otherwise, we may not get that chance in the future. Because he already said that they can't, they're not doing any more electronic-controlled bridges. They're not doing, you know, they need three-year leads. And we just keep pushing it, they're just gonna go ahead and do it. That's because they have to. And, and so I look at it as, I was really pushing rehab because I was very, very concerned about the cost of the taxpayers having to pick up the maintenance of the bridge. But that doesn't address our bicycle pedestrian plan. That doesn't address our citizens with disability issues. It doesn't address our Riverwalk underneath. So it doesn't address our economic development partners' interests. So to me, rehab is probably not the option, even though I don't believe taxpayers of Oshkosh should be maintaining this bridge when it's built. But at the same time, it's state statute. We can't, unless we change that in the next few years of when a different governor may be in office, a different legislator, legislative group is in office, different leaders. But on the current statute, we are taking ownership of that. And that's a concern of mine because we don't have an extra $130 to $150,000. Not now, and probably not in the future. So where that's gonna come from, I don't know. But I think we have our board and commission's recommendations. We have three options that has pretty much been vetted through the process. And I think we really, as much as I would like more information, I think we need to make a decision tonight. And I think we move forward with one of three options.
At this point, I'm gonna ask Mr. Roloff for his comments on this. You've probably been involved in more bridge projects than all of us put together.
These are never easy, because you're talking about such a long commitment to this. And there, on page two of the staff report, Mr. Roby and I put together some comparison factors. You've essentially talked about most of them, even though you didn't specifically refer to it. The whole thing with Section 8410 of the statute is obviously grading. I think the first meeting I had with Mr. Bertrand, I gave him an earful. You've done me proud because you did a lot better than I did. But that issue clearly is hanging over our heads. But we have to take a look at what is in our best interest for the next 75 years. The rehab, I think the comments you made, Mr. Herman, reflect my thinking in terms of, the rehab does put it down the road, and there are so many, there's so much unfinished business that you have with that. But there's flaws with every one of these, these options. And as Ms. Allison Osby and I said, you know, it's an ugly baby, and sometimes you just have to say it. And there's no good option here. The fixed bridge is higher profile than we're used to. That would take a lot of getting used to. And the lift bridge is gonna be five feet higher than what we currently have, and we're gonna have the maintenance costs on that. We can certainly fight to have that changed, and I would encourage council to talk to our legislators about that. That's not Mr. Bertrand's department. He knows where we stand on that. I think he's heard plenty tonight. But the mayor and I were at a meeting with the Chamber of Governmental Affairs Committee. Our local legislators were there. We also let them know that we were concerned about this interpretation. I believe it's an interpretation of 8410 because the law hasn't changed, but the interpretation has changed. That means it's not just the law, it's an interpretation of the law. I'm not the attorney, and I haven't asked Ms. Lawrence to do a detailed analysis of that to see where we would stand. That's another day. And I think that's something we need to talk to our legislators about. With that said, you know, Jake has put up a few charts, the drawings themselves, or the renderings. We asked them to take some photographs that our staff had taken and superimpose a bridge. If you, if you were at home and you toggle back and forth on your computer, you can get a good idea of what the rehab, which is essentially status quo versus the new fixed bridge. And it's 14 feet higher in the middle. And at the, at the, at the edge, Mr. Bertrand says it's about 20 feet. Based on our, our view of the stairs, that's about a story and a half. With the setback over on Morgan side, that makes it not as bad on the Morgan side, but it doesn't really change much with the city center side because city center's already there, and it's already up close and personal. It really is a matter of what, what your preference is with that. Excuse me, my computer just decided to take a rest. Mr. Roby's estimated the cost of about $142,000, and that would be based on cost today. No other assumptions on, on anything there that Mr. Peck brought up. The annual cost of future replacement, that's the scary part, because the lift bridge is so much more expensive. And we probably put a little shock value into the staff report, trying to project what a new bridge would cost us in 2099, when the bridge would be replaced. And in 2099, if you take just 1.5%, you're looking at a $120 million replacement. That's just so mind-blowing. You gotta go back to the 33 to 35 and put it in today's numbers. If this was coming back to council, if 75 years ago, that rule had been put in place, you'd be looking at a 33 to $35 million expense. The council sets aside $11.4 million for capital improvements, for general capital improvements. So basically, it would suck up about three years of our CIP. That's the perspective that we have to worry about with the lift bridge. Aesthetics aside, with all due respect to, these folks have great vision for the area. I respect so much the developers who are here trying to think about the future. But three years of capital improvements, we know what happened when we stopped doing capital improvements. Our roads got worse. That's a, that's a dangerous situation for us. The fixed bridge, it in and of itself, is, if you, if you had to set aside the replacement costs, it's 15, 14 to 15 million. That's still a lot of money. The views, I'm just gonna tell you, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. Mr. Roby and I have discussed this. We could pull one of those options out of the hat. We could give you a pro or a con argument to every one of these. The view is in the eye of the beholder. Over the course of 75 years, that bridge view is going to change based on the buildings there. Even if the Morgan District magically got developed tonight, before that, before that bridge is done, that building would probably get refurbished greatly or even replaced yet again. Same thing with city center. So those are issues that you have to address. Can you accommodate them? Mr. Davis told me about 120 feet would be the distance from the bridge to the building footprint of the Morgan building because sidewalks and, excuse me, parking lots and that would be there. So those things are there. I've asked input from all the different departments. The advantage of the new fixed bridge, it's more open from a public safety standpoint. The new lift bridge is similar to what you'd see on Wisconsin. It's more of a tunnel bridge. Public safety's not a big fan of that, just giving you more perspective. I think the folks at city center have already talked about the Beckett's access. I don't know if any of those options are good, Kurt. I, they're, it's already difficult. Quite honestly, if you take a look at Beckett's, it's a difficult access in and out anyway because people are flying off the bridge as it currently exists. So that access isn't the greatest to start with, and it's even, and having it access off of Division Street when they've been on Jackson Street for years, that's a difficult part of that. I don't know if the new lift bridge, realigning it to near the parking ramp entrance is great, takes it a little farther away, gives you a little better vision, but that's there. And Division Street access, years ago, none of the, none of you were on the council, and it was before I was here, but there was a big debate about aligning Division Street with Marion Road at the time. Council decided to go against it at that time. Mr. Potek, Mr. Roby's predecessor, said that that was certainly in the back of his mind as he was looking at it. And he was trying to, he was advocating for the replacement, for the realignment because he was thinking about this bridge down the road. He wasn't necessarily thinking about which option. He just knew something was gonna happen. Those are all there. But for 75 years, you know, what are you gonna get? You're gonna get a bridge for keeps. I mean, it's effectively for keeps. The mayor said his grandson would be the only person around that would be there to make a decision in 75 years. And that's a really good way to look at it, when you think about it. It's, it's maybe none of us. Unless you've got some magic pill, it's not gonna be us. The new fixed bridge has more advantages just because of, we'll have to change a lot of things around this surrounding area anyway. It's cheaper, and it's not kicking the can down the road. If I was giving you a recommendation, it'd be a very weak recommendation on the new fixed bridge. If I was doing it at a percentage of 100, I'd say 33 for the other two and 34 for that. I'm not enthusiastic about making this recommendation, and that's why we didn't put one on the report. I'm just giving you, based on all the input I've received, and, and there's no good option. But if you're gonna give the DOT an option tonight, that would be my very reluctant recommendation to you.
I'd like to ask a...
And if you wanna disagree with me, go right ahead. I'm totally okay with that.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question to Mr. Lang from the Morgan District perspective. Just, I know this is putting you on the spot and not a lot of notice here, but if that were to be the case, where we went with that fixed high-level bridge, is there a scenario in which the development that has been proposed could be modified so that there is parking at that level and that first level retail was elevated up? Do you follow me?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Obviously, anything's possible, but...
Yes. So we, we, we looked at already incorporating first-level parking with retail on the exterior corridor. I think with retail, you have two considerations. One are always vehicle traffic. The second is access. So what does access look like to the second floor of a store? And as a coffee shop, are you going to go to the second floor to get your coffee in the morning? I think access, location, 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 right? So could it be done? Yes. What would the cost be? I have no idea. We generally, a two-tier parking deck, we ruled out of our own plans because we felt it was cost prohibitive for the economics of the site. So I do know we've already ruled out a two-tier parking deck and have, have kind of tried to get what cover parking we will have in the interior of the building because it was the most cost-effective solution we saw.
Thanks.
Can I get a comment?
Sure.
Basically, you got the three choices, and the other ones are in the $30 million range. And I just think there's, those are out of the question because of the budget shortfalls of the state. But I mean, no build is, we're used to kicking the can down the road like everybody's saying, so that's not gonna be an option. And then rehab is nine to 11 million, and it lasts 25 years supposedly. And with the brand-new bridge, you can get that potentially for only $3 million more. So I don't even see really them wanting to invest 11 million into a bridge that's gonna need to be potentially replaced in 25 years. And if you look at, like, the landscapes of the city, looking at old pictures, I mean, 25 years ago was like the mid-'90s, and the city pretty much looks the same. But if you go back 75 years, it looks like a completely different city. So, I mean, 75 years from now, we're probably gonna have over 100,000 people living here. So it just seems like there's not really a lot of options, and we kinda know what direction the state's gonna go already. I mean, the brand-new bridge is not even much more than rehabbing. So it just seems like that's probably gonna be what's gonna happen. So I don't even think we're gonna have a choice. So, just a comment.
One further question. All of our bridges are of varying ages. And this is a crystal ball. When they do have to be replaced in 25, 50, 70 years, what would you envision those new bridges looking like? And where I'm going, this is, do we want sort of a continuity along amongst our bridges that one doesn't bounce up at you and that there's kind of a smooth looking, pleasant visual as you go down the river?
And I know it's probably not the answer that you would like to hear, but the reality is every location is unique and different. Anytime we look at the replacement of a bascule or lift bridge, we're required by the federal highways to look at what the impacts are of a high-level fixed bridge. So we looked at it in Manasha. The impacts were prohibitive based on the developments surrounding it. We looked at it here, thinking that the developments were going to be more significant than ultimately what they ended up being, quite honestly. And certainly, we would argue that there are aesthetic differences from height and everything else associated with the lift bridge. But looking at the environmental and other factors that we look at as far as impacts associated with that, the impacts were not as significant as we thought they would be for a high-level fixed bridge at this location. Wisconsin Avenue was just replaced. I mean, so certainly, I mean, that lift bridge is going to operate for that 75-plus-year duration. We have a rehabilitation project on Congress, Highway 21, in, I believe, 2020, looking at some concrete deck repair and overlay of that bridge. So again, that would be long-range before any larger level improvement was looked at on Congress. Main Street, I can tell you, there's nothing in our program right now that we're even looking at it. But I don't know the year Main Street was built offhand. So where that 75-year life would end up for Main Street, I can't really say at this point, but it would certainly be well into the future. We recognize certainly that it's a difficult decision for the city, that the, the impacts, the alternative, are very close, and none of them may be overly appealing on that. The one thing that Chuck even mentioned, from a different perspective, looking at it, what we're asking at this point, say from a house, do you prefer a ranch, a two-star, or a split level? I mean, that's the kind of conceptual design we're at at this point. And within each of those concepts, certainly there's a lot of final design issues that need to be tweaked and worked out. Within a high-level fixed, if you would select that, there's a number of things, certainly from designing retaining walls to design of piers to other things that need to be finalized and coordinated within that. And the same would apply to a bascule or a lift. And the same would apply to a vascular lift bridge on that. So there's a lot of design decisions that need to be made and coordinated with the city on whatever preferred alternative moves forward. We're certainly willing to work closely with the city and city officials throughout that process. And one of the first things that we did when we started this back in late 2015 was trying to identify what the local objectives really were at that point. We created a chart on a kind of aerial background as far as all the comments and feedback we got from the public, the local officials, stakeholder group that we had put together, which included development on both sides of the river. Certainly, there are tough decisions. We don't deny that the decisions are tough and that there may not be a clear-cut favorite from the city's standpoint, and every alternative has pluses and minuses along with that. But likewise, if we didn't try to coordinate and get the opinion of the city when we recognize that it's in a downtown area, to me, we wouldn't be doing our job by not reaching out to the city and asking for your opinion on it as we move forward the environmental process.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Ms. Pasky?
Okay. So tonight, we were asked to provide you with a recommendation for the future bridge. And I think that we've all had enough time to get our questions to you and work with you. You seem to have been very open to answering questions and concerns, so as city staff. Looking back at the goals that I wanted to achieve, serving on bike and pedestrian, sustainability issues, I just want to let you know that I am in favor of the high-level fixed bridge for whatever that opinion is worth. I know Mr. Roloff has stated that we needed to come off as a unified front, but I don't believe that that is going to happen tonight. So just, I want you to have some sense of some input. I do think that the high-level fixed is an exciting option. It's something different for Oshkosh. I like the idea of being on the forefront of that. Sustainability issues, you know, you're taking off those idling vehicles when they're waiting for a bridge. You have a clear path for anybody who might be living over in the Morgan District to, you know, you're not going to get stuck on a bridge. If you're running late for work, you got a clear shot, emergency personnel for a safety, public safety point of view. I was prepared tonight to make my recommendation, and that is my recommendation. So thank you for your time. And if I have any questions, I know how to get ahold of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask the council, is there any more information we would like from Mr. Bertrand and DOT to provide us? And if not, are we ready to proceed with a recommendation? Or what is the council's pleasure tonight?
Well, I mean, there's a lot more information that I would like to have. I mean, I just don't think that every option's been explored. I mean, if we've got, getting back to the remote operation. And I agree with, you know, and I had, basically, I had my thoughts on where I was going to approve tonight. But I agree, this is, this is a decision that has to be made between three bad alternatives. And what makes it the hardest one is that, the thing that sticks in me most is even if we do this, we have this assurance that we'll take your input into account. I take you, sir, at your word. I take you at your word. But at the end of the day, it's been stated, we're going to make the decision, and we being the DOT. So we have a real, I mean, it's picking between which of, actually, we have ugly triplets.
That's what we had to say.
We've got to figure out which is the.
Least ugly.
We have three ugly babies, I think was what I said.
Yeah. I certainly appreciate your situation. And honestly, trust is something that Chuck and I both worked hard to earn and to maintain. I worked through with Dave and Steve Goody on the Main Street reconstruction project that was completed in 2010. It's a long process. Certainly, the impacts on that project were much different than the project that we're talking about tonight on that. But we try to be upfront and honest. I'm not going to stand here tonight and tell you that our region is not going to make the decision. I mean, the reality is, we give strong consideration, but we do make the decision, and that's our responsibility as stewards of the federal and state funds that are associated with the project. We will certainly work closely and look to maintain that trust throughout whatever preferred alternative is selected moving forward.
I mean, and for me, it comes down between the raised bridge and the fixed bridge. The problem I have is the long-term costs of it and the operations of it. I do believe that 8410 has been interpreted incorrectly, and this council's often been accused of saying, oh, woe is me with Madison. But at the end of the day, that's where the decision is made, and I think that that statute's been interpreted incorrectly. State does not live up to its obligations related to payment for municipal services. So I don't see them, I don't see the state changing the formula and helping us out with the operations moving forward.
I just have one suggestion. City Attorney and I have been trying to put something together for your consideration that I wish I'd thought of before we did the resolution. But with respect to the 8410, I'll offer this up, and if the council wants to throw it into the resolution, once you've selected what option, suggest that you add language to this effect. Be it further resolved that the selection of this option in no way indicates the city's endorsement or acceptance of the current interpretation of Wisconsin statute, section 84-10, that assigns financial responsibility of a new bridge to the city of Oshkosh. Just putting this on record that, you know, we'll give you our selection, but we still don't like 8410's interpretation.
I would move to amend the motion to include that wording.
I need a second.
Second.
Do we need, we need discussion from the public in this amendment? Should anyone coming forward bring it back to council for discussion?
Do we discuss any part of the resolution or just that?
Just the amendment. If there's no further discussion, we still have to pick.
This is just on an addition. I haven't helped you that much. You still have a tough job to do.
This is adding this to the motion.
Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Am I picking one, or am I just?
No, no, this is the amendment.
Just that language that I added.
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
And to kind of further what Mr. Peck, we've all been saying, the state, we do get chastised for picking on the, or folks at the legislature, but they constantly are forcing costs back to us. We're forced to do recycling, they cut the budget. We have to do public municipal services, they keep cutting the funding to the city as these institutions grow. So the track record of the legislatures isn't great as far as playing fair with the cities and villages in this state. We hear Madison talk, they're going to cut taxes here, cut taxes there, but they shove the expense down to us. And I've said before, a million-dollar fodder truck is going to be a million dollars. Pierce does not have Black Friday sales. So that's one of our cautions. We're just afraid of what's going to happen to our budgets and not knowing what Madison will do to us again. So now, are we looking?
Choice.
Do you need, we do need a?
The resolution has all three options, so it would just be amending it to place one of the, one of the three, or something else, I guess. But those are really the three options that the council has.
I'll make a motion that we, as a council, approve alternative F, modified included Division Street intersection realignment, which would incorporate a lot of what I think all of us want, which is the language, obviously. But it does improve safety, it does give bicycle pedestrians that alternative that they need, it improves vehicle traffic flow, it improves boat passage. I'm not happy about taking the cost on, but I think of the alternatives, I think we have to look at the bigger picture. And I know a lot of our boards and commissions wanted the flyover bridge, but I'm concerned about economic development with a flyover bridge down the line. And I'm not talking five years, I'm talking 10, 20, 30. It doesn't fit with the rest of the bridges in the city of Oshkosh, and I think we have to take that into consideration, too. And I know that changes sometimes are hard. And the flyover bridges in our community right now currently are for railroads, not for boat traffic, other than the 41 Bridge. And that was never a lift bridge, as far as I know. Maybe it was in the '20s and '30s.
Might look at me.
Just saying.
I don't even think we have a flyover bridge in our community to begin with.
Yes, we do, and we have three of them.
In our community, I said.
No, in our community, we do not.
So your recommendation is?
Is F, which is what the planning commission supported.
High-fixed level bridge.
High-fixed level bridge.
No. No. F is on alignment raised.
I'm sorry.
New lift bridge.
New lift bridge on alignment that will help accomplish quite a bit of our, of the goals and discussions that we've all had. So that's my motion, is to approve alternative F and make that the recommendation going forward to the state of Wisconsin DOT.
Is there a second?
I will second it to discuss. Now it's open to the public. Open to the public. And this is on the amendment of adding specifically on alignment raised clearance.
Matt Mugrower, 2321 Golden Ave, Oshkosh. My question is, I hear council members, Peck's concerns with the long-term cost. Completely agree, especially after the last few months of even my own saying fiscal conservative and fiscal responsibility for this council and long-term plans. What is stopping you from, once you take ownership of the bridge, whether you agree with the interpretation or not of future long-term costs, of investing in it and just turning it into remote operation all on your own? Once it's yours, it's yours. It's your maintenance. You no longer have them saying you can't do it. What's stopping you from then investing in it, turning it into a remote-operated bridge that does reduce long-term costs? Sure, you have a fixed capital improvement, but it lowers your long-term costs of, basically, it's labor. It's the bridge tenders, that's the biggest cost of that, that number. So that's my question.
Because, well, that's true, but there would be all sorts of, we'd probably have to get it approved by the Coast Guard and everything else like that. Furthermore, we also just got beat up about long-term debt, and that would require taking on debt. That would require us, and in order to get our debt house in order, we have put ourselves on a spending plan to bring our debt down. So the next thing is, is so then, of course, we do that. Appreciate your comment, but it's, you're going to, it's, you squeeze the balloon one place, it shrinks here, it's popping out someplace else. So good comment, though, very valid. Appreciate the, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but it's, that'll be a decision that'll be made when it comes forward, when that time comes forward.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak to this amendment? Bring it back to council, we have a motion. And a second. Is there any further discussion?
Actually.
Councilperson, Paul Mary?
Yes. You know, Mr. Crowsey pointed out that, as much as I'm struggling with the high-level fixed option, he did point out that there's several million-dollar difference, which is, in looking at E or F, those are twice the cost. So I'm not, that's one component. I had been originally leaning towards rehabbing, given that it would give us some additional time to see what new technologies, what new building techniques, what other options may So if I have to pick between the two and we need to send a message, I wouldn't be able to go with alternative F.
So it's on the amendment to choose F.
Is there any further discussion?
I think, I think the only thing I just want to say, I wish in hindsight, we would have maybe had an additional workshop, because part of the problem is, we don't get to discuss this as a council. And I'll be willing to take responsibility. There's been a lot of noise going on the last few months. And in hindsight, I think it would have been advantageous to be able to be in a setting where we could openly talk through this versus the situation that we're in right now. So I guess, I guess, is there somewhat of a compromise? Because I understand what Mr. Herman is saying, and also what Bill is saying in that, you know, to delay this, delay this. I mean, every two weeks or every week, I do understand poses a problem. But I mean, we haven't had any open discussion. I mean, we had one workshop. To be able to flush out all the ideas, and I kind of feel like we've, rather, we did it to ourselves, or rather, rather, just the situation is as it has been the last few months, that now I feel like we're backed into a corner and we're going to make a rash decision just because we have to. So I'm just throwing that out there, and I guess I would like feedback from my colleagues as to your thoughts about my comments.
I would agree, and the frustration we have all expressed is we're not really sure what we're getting visually. We have a rough idea of what we're getting. And I'm going to say that, I said this a number of times, we will get a bridge, whatever that bridge looks like. If we want anything to make that bridge look architecturally pleasing, compatible with our riverfront, compatible with the city's history, the tax, the citizens of Oshkosh will pick up the bill for the design work and whatever additional cost that that design incurs. That's a correct statement? You know, I just want to make sure everyone understands that. And also understands when it comes budgeting time, we have to find, not the next few years, we have to find the monies to pay for this maintenance going forward. And what we think is $140,000 now in five years is going to be a whole lot more money. So, while this is a complicated decision, and we're going to see it for 75 years, not all of us, certainly not me.
I'd probably outlive us all.
If I follow my mother, I probably will outlive you guys all. So if there's no further comments from the council, we will now vote on this resolution.
No, on the amendment.
On the amendment.
For choice of F.
Which is F, which is the on-alignment lift bridge instruction. Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
So the votes to pick F or any of the other ones? I mean.
No, just F at this point.
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
No.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, 4-3.
How's the main motion with F?
I would look for a motion.
It's all right. It just needs.
Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
This is to approve the actual resolution now?
Yeah, it's approved, the resolution.
With F as our recommendation?
Is F our recommendation.
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
No.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, 4-3.
At this point, I would recommend we take a 10-minute break.
I second that.
I thought you ladies would like us to take a 10-minute break.
Wait a minute, that's a little.
I understand.
No. Our city clerk usually likes to stretch her legs.
I'm starting to get the hangries.
I'm starting to get the hangries.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page.
Approved sale of a portion of the State Street parking lot, grant access easement to Harry and Priscilla Kiekefer, 105 Washington Avenue, State Street parking lot. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this resolution? Is anyone coming forward to bring it back to the council?
We don't have time, get up here.
Good evening, Randy Schmiedel, 2:30, Ohio Street, Oshkosh. And, or, do you have some questions, or?
Well, we thought you were coming up to speak about it, or are you here to answer questions?
I, I can do either. I'm sorry I didn't hear you in the back, but-
Well, as long as you're up here, Mr. Schmiedel, what?
Just give us a little overview of where you're at with your project and what this resolution will do for your project, please.
So, the first part of the redevelopment was to restore 105 Washington from its original use of an office complex into 20 upper-end apartments. That part of it is finished. Now, we're looking to do a second phase, which would acquire the parking lot behind the complex, and we would add surface parking along with garage parking.
Okay. Well, so, should we put this on the floor, then?
Anybody else, anybody else want to make comments on this? Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, then I would move for approval of 17-243.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Davis, can you just put your wisdom to this and?
I'll attempt to. This is a complicated project, and it's changed over time, based on some things that we discovered through the project. I think the developer found project costs on the renovation more expensive than they were originally planning. When they found the, or when the city found the contamination underneath the parking lot, that forced a reevaluation of the entire project, and that we struggled with. We finally came up with a solution when it comes to, still building the garages, still proceeding with the project, but the city's mill and overlay of the remaining parking lot is less than we were hoping for with the reconstruction originally planned for those 20 spaces that the city was keeping. When you kind of take a step back, it's still a historic preservation project, it's still a project that basically matches what we did with the beach building. The contamination, I think they can deal with. I still think it's a project that helps the downtown immensely, provides a new, new standard for housing in the downtown area. And, last but not least, I think it sets the table for future development in that neighborhood, specifically along Washington Avenue, that we're hoping we'll see more great things with the historic preservation that has already occurred, and we expect to see with the new developments, say at the Y or anything else that's in that neighborhood.
The units that are being built, will they fit into the, I mean, are they, is, are they gonna be, fit in with the development, or are they just gonna look like-
The garages?
Put up, yeah, these garages.
If I recall, they're to match the basic characteristics of the building, and I think I might have to defer to somebody else who might remember the plans for the garages specifically. But I thought they were supposed to be similar according to the approval at the early stages of the project.
Mr. Schmiedel, could you direct that? Because I don't believe I saw that in any of the information that we had here. So, okay.
Just one other question, what's the easement thing with the Kiekefers? There's no information other than just what's here.
Well, when we were doing our due diligence, we discovered that the Kiekefers were actually using the city parking lot to get to the four parking spaces on the east side of their building. And we didn't want to cut those four spaces off for them, so we're granting them an easement to use the parking lot driveway to get in and out, to get to their four spaces. They've been using it for many, many years, and it didn't seem to interfere with the city's plans or the developer's plans, so that's what we came up with, to solve that long-term for the Kiekefers.
Okay, thank you.
Pelmary.
So it looks like there's about a $30-some thousand difference in what's being offered for the land.
Yes.
Okay. And that pushes us up into that 90% city contribution. The tax increment estimated to be $566,000. And since that did push us up into the 90%, we're adding a look-back clause.
Correct. Just like we did in the beach building, if you recall, that went up to 90%.
Yes.
And we required a look-back clause in that particular case as well.
My question relates to the look-back clause, and actually, maybe Lynn, you may need to chime in on this. So it says that we're allowing them to actually achieve up to a 15% internal rate of return? Is that standard, I mean, seeing as how we are reducing and giving some allowances here as a result of this contamination, or, I mean, how is that 15% determined as the cap before an adjustment would be made?
That was-
Those are not, you know, standard provisions, we've only had it in one other agreement, and it's more a negotiation factor, so Alan could probably address it better.
And that specific piece was suggested by Ellers and Associates on the beach building, and that 15% was based on their experience with other development agreements that they've worked on with the look-back clauses for this type of project. So, our financial consultant recommended that approach and that figure.
Thank you.
I had a question. The apartment complex has 20 units, correct?
Correct.
So, mostly apartments around here, usually you could get a garage if you choose to, but usually you don't need more than one. I mean, why do you want 30 garages? It says in here, create 30 garage spaces.
There's actually 20.
Okay.
Some of them are doubled, so?
Oh, some of the garages are doubles?
Yeah.
Okay.
Garage spaces, correct, yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, council? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Pelmary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 17-244, reject bid for Public Works Contract Number 17-25 for private side lead-water service replacement. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Is anyone coming forward, bring it back to the council for a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
James, you look like you're chopping at the bit.
I'm, I'm just waiting for any questions that you have.
All right, is, is, as, I, is, please explain, as I know we've talked about lead service replacement, and just so the public understands why we are canceling or rejecting bids for this.
The, the primary reason is cost. As we developed the changes to Chapter 20 of the municipal code that were brought to the council in March, as well as the policy for the pilot program for replacing lead service laterals, we had actually talked with several plumbers and said, okay, you know, if you had to do this, what do you think the cost would be? They generally, the cost estimates that, you know, they gave us, and we- They generally, the cost estimates that, you know, they gave us, and we gave them some basic parameters, and they said between two thousand five hundred and three thousand dollars. As we, you know, put together plans and specifications and bid out a project for contractor to hold a contract with us, those average costs were in excess of five thousand dollars per property. So, even with the one thousand five hundred dollar cost share, we were still seeing numbers in excess of what private plumbers had estimated for us. Taking that a step further, since the update to Chapter Twenty has passed, there have been three locations where a lead service lateral had required an emergency repair, the city replaced the municipal side of the lead service, and then, in accordance with Chapter Twenty, the property owner replaced their side as well, and we'd asked those three plumbers that did the work to, if they could provide us with cost information from those three situations, and those costs ranged from two thousand one hundred to three thousand five hundred. In the case of the three thousand five hundred, that work was done in January, and also ended up including some sidewalk replacement costs. So, just the cost of the lateral alone is three thousand to a little under in that case. So, again, we're seeing costs from the smaller plumber side of things that were in line with what our estimates had been as we prepared the program. So, what we are recommending here is to reject the bids on the public contract. As staff, one of the options that we're able to utilize through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Principal Forgiveness Program, which we've been granted a five hundred thousand dollar principal forgiveness loan or grant, is we can establish a pre-approved list of plumbers that, you know, we publish a request for qualifications, plumbers submit that, and we would establish a pre-approved list of plumbers that property owners can contract with, and then the prop, the cost share through the Safe Drinking Water Program would still be available for those utilizing that pre-approved plumbers list. So, you know, we'd be seeing costs back where we expected them, so cost to the property owner of, you know, twelve fifty to fifteen hundred dollars as opposed to, you know, close to four thousand dollars had we chosen to award both of these contracts.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you. James, do you think that this would cause any of the local plumbers to increase their rates, knowing that this is an option financing elsewhere? Or is there something we can do in the program to keep this cost-effective?
Um, it, due to, you know, some of the requirements, I think we would be hard-pressed to try to limit the cost, but, you know, I think one of the things is, you know, by having a list of many pre-qualified, pre-certified plumbers, you know, we would be asking residents to get three quotes, you know, so if one plumber is, you know what, I'm really busy, it's gonna cost me this much to do it, and somebody else on that list says, you know what, I'm not busy, I can do it for this, you know, that, by increasing that level of available plumbers, I believe will help keep the costs of the program lower.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a question down there?
Actually, I just want to make a comment, I really appreciate this being brought forward and the, you know, looking at the common sense side of this from the resident's perspective. I just am glad to see this come through.
Yeah, as we did our analysis, and the city manager and the finance director and I kind of sat down and tossed a few ideas, we just, we weren't comfortable, we needed to do something different, and that's why we're proposing it the way we are.
Okay, if there are no further questions, council, would you please take a roll?
Crosey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Resolution seventeen dash two-four-five, reject bid for Public Works Contract Number Seventeen dash Twenty-six for private side lead water service replacement. Anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? I see no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. This must be similar to the previous...
Uh, yes, um, Contract Seventeen Twenty-five was for work related to street reconstruction contract seventeen oh five, so Murdoch, New York, Maricopa, Dickinson. Contract Seventeen Twenty-six is for work related to construction contract seventeen oh four, so Bay Shore, Lake and Evoline. So, we had two different, two different contracts bid out, so we had to do this as separate resolutions.
Okay. If there are no further questions, council, would you please take the roll?
Crosey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
So, council discussion, direction, city manager, and future agenda items. The first future agenda item is town hall meeting with local legislatures, state representatives.
Mr. Mayor, Diane, in my office had checked with the various legislators, they were available for an afternoon meeting on either May fifteenth, which is next Monday, or May twenty-second. They're available, it's more mostly in the afternoon, like I said, about three o'clock, or thereafter, we can set a time that's acceptable to council. Those are the two basic options, we were aware that one council member at least was gonna be unavailable for either meeting. Now that I think about it, I think it's more like four o'clock, because we were trying to call, council member Crosey's scheduled...
I can be there by three.
Okay. So, Diane was thinking, okay.
I won't, I will, I'm traveling next week, so I won't be available on the fifteenth.
And I also had challenges with afternoon.
And the twenty-second, was it?
Both.
Oh, both.
So, mornings were okay, but afternoons for both.
Okay. Not sure where the council wants to go on that, and certainly we want to talk about topics and how we want to deal with that issue. Any preference? Is it...
I'm not available on the seventeenth, and I might have an issue on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth or the twenty-second?
Fifteenth or twenty-second, both Mondays.
Uh, twenty-second doesn't work for me either. Neither one.
Neither one works for you, Steve? Okay.
No, I have, I have to work.
Okay. Shall we push it into June, or do you want to just set on the twenty-second and see how many folks show up?
I'd recommend going into June.
Yeah, me too.
Monday still?
I can do Monday afternoons, I can't do Monday morning.
Any others? What I'll do is, since we're pushing into June, I'll, I'll present some dates and times for council at the next meeting, and I'll probably have Diane call you anyway, just to make sure we keep that going. Councilor Allison Osby, your afternoons are still tough?
Afternoons are tough, only because if I have client appointments, they don't necessarily always, depending on the situation, stay within a designated time, and if they run over, but, you know, I want the council to do what's in the best interest of the majority, and I'll just try to work around that.
Okay.
Wasn't our last one in the morning?
They have traditionally been in the morning, trying to get them before they head down to Madison, but they were the ones that were saying that the afternoons seemed to work for them, so it was kind of odd.
By June, they'll be in recess, so, no one's going to do, no comment.
I'll get back to council, and start working in, working into June. It probably won't be the first two weeks of June, I'm gonna have some conflicts as well. Okay, Mr. Collins is here, Mr. Herman asked about a little update on downtown parking, and Mr. Collins has been working with the, with the bid group on that.
Sure, yeah, I can just give you a quick update. So, if you recall, when we talked about the downtown parking implementation, the plan that Walker Park Consultants put together, the council's recommendation was to improve the signage for the downtown parking. So, what we're currently doing is, we have a group together that has a couple park utility members, some of the bid board members, and the mayor, and we've been working on, number one, they made some recommendations on parking lot naming, more, to be more congruent with the location of the lot, like a convention center, east and north, for example. So, they came up with some ideas for that, and then we looked at potentially outsourcing the, the design of the signs and some marketing, that was, it was kind of expensive, so the group decided to see if we could do that in-house. So, we talked to the museum, but their graphic designer didn't have the time, but the library just hired a graphic designer, so we contracted with the library for a very reduced rate, and the graphic designer at the library is currently working on designing some parking lot signage for us. He's going to be presenting some mock-ups and concepts at, at the next group meeting. So, that's kind of, that's where we're at with that, and then we'll look at updating some of the wave-finding signage with the universal P going in, once we get those signs made up.
As we get to the busy time of the season downtown, Leach, et cetera, do you anticipate that signage to be ready to go by then?
It's probably not gonna be done till, if we get the concept and design approved, I'm thinking it'll probably be then this summer, by the time we get them. It depends what he comes up with, then we have to decide if we can do it in-house or if we have to contract it.
Okay.
So, once we decide that, then it's, then it's up to, you know, whoever's gonna manufacture them, when they can fit it in our schedule. Our guys can work on them, you know, if there's a rainy day or something, but they have to street paint also in the summer, so if we do it in-house, it's probably gonna take a little bit longer.
Okay.
But, that was initially the goal, but it's taken a little bit longer, so I think the design will probably be finalized sometime in the next month or so, and then, so, it's May, June, yeah, it's probably gonna be then this summer, probably fall, that time they can...
Just, maybe periodically, you can give an update on where we're at with some of those things, so that, because I know that the bid wanted, you know, put parking meters back downtown and stuff, and we didn't go in that direction, so whatever we can get for information, it'd be appreciated, thank you.
Sure.
Next, a second time for citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only, statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Ashkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting. It must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. I see no one rushing forward, I see no one, period.
Wait, Nate's here, he's somebody.
Jake.
Jake.
Staff back there.
He's, he's taking care of the meeting for us, so, pick on Jake. Councilmember announcements, first is bike registration fee, councilperson Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a friendly reminder that the month of May is a fee registration holiday, meaning there is no charge to register your bikes with the city of Ashkosh. Any Ashkosh police officer can tell you that it is much easier to recover any stolen bicycles if they are registered with the city, so by offering you no fees to do so, please come on down to City Hall and get your bikes registered. Also, on May twentieth is Bike Ash, so on that Saturday, between the hours of ten and one, there are stops around the city of Ashkosh, so hop on your bike and you can pick up a pedal pass at any participating stop. They do include South Park here in the city of Ashkosh, the Lake Fly Cafe out at the zoo, the new Boatworks kayak launch is also a stop. There are also business partners, partners such as Oaks, the library Wheel &amp; Sprocket, the University of the YMCA, so you just kind of drive around on your bike, stop at these locations, get your little stamp, you get a little raffle ticket. After one o'clock, we all stop at the senior center here in Ashkosh, you turn in your tickets, there's food, there's music, and then there's tons of prizes offered by a lot of these sponsors as well. So, starting at ten on Saturday, come join us, it's quite fun, I did it with the kids last year, and I actually won, I think I got a growler from Bare Bones Brewery, so I was, I was a very happy camper. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, an update in the Ashkosh Putting on Aging Strategic Plan, councilperson Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to update council, and thank you once again for at budget season allowing some funds to go towards strategic planning, that's gonna address, obviously, our need for direction when it comes to a great population, which is definitely those that are aging and are seniors, but it's also addressing two more, that's coming out of the meetings. We've had two strategic planning meeting, meetings with Walter so far, we have another one coming up on, on Monday, and in that, you know, obviously, we're, we're also talking about some of the things in which we, you know, want to appeal and look at the overall objective of, you know, that fifty-five and over, and classifying them in different categories and groups, and then also identifying those, you know, that, you know, maybe in, in one stage your health of life, and then you also have, you know, another component to that. Monday, we're actually including, we are personally inviting some from the senior community to actually give input, but what was, I thought extremely beneficial is we, in our last meeting last week, we had invited members of, our department heads from city staff, and there was a number that came, and so I just wanted to acknowledge, because it was a two-hour meeting, and to get their perspective from the different areas of the cities, of the city. So, I just wanted to note, Mr. Roloff took time out of his day to be there, John Fitzpatrick, Ray Mauer, Tim Franz, Dean Smith, Jim Collins, Brad from our museum, our lovely Pam, and Alan Davis. So, I certainly want to thank them for taking time out of their busy work week to participate in this, they added a lot of value and comments from their perspective, and so I just wanted to update my council and also the community that this is something that we're actively engaged in and moving forward, and I'll continue to update as we move along.
Thank you. Mr. Roloff, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda packet is a memo regarding the purchase of vehicles for fire, water distribution, and electric division, those are done through the state contract, so we get good bids on those, and get very good bids on those, and they were all well under budget, so we're happy to report that. Just an update on special event stakeholder working group, they held their third meeting today, all the meetings have been running about an hour and a half, so it's been very efficient, good attendance by all the, the stakeholder groups. They're getting into the methodologies and dissecting those, and, and coming to agreement with staff in terms of, let's agree on this and, as we move forward. The idea is to get a methodology that everybody can agree on, so that we bring it to council, there's something that you know that has got some support for it. You know, we haven't had any areas of disagreement so far, but obviously, that, that could come to pass, and if it does, we'll, we'll point that out as well. Happy to answer any questions you have, Mr. Mauer wasn't able to be here tonight to give a more detailed report, but it's, it's been going well. The arena update is in your packet, that seems to be going well, there's, we're working through getting the state-approved plans done, they made some tweaks to their plan, but they seem to be doing okay on schedule, we're pleased with that, their, the foundation work is starting to be showing up over there, if you peek over the fence, you can see that that good progress is being made, I really don't have much more than that. Do have some items here in your report, number thirty-three is the year-end fourth-quarter revenue and expense statements. Ms. Larson had given you an update back in March, and I'm happy to report that those numbers are pretty much on target with what she had indicated back in March. So, I'm just gonna revise, or just update you on those. On the revenue side, we're about three hundred thousand down, various fines and forfeitures was probably the main reason for that, but we were also seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars under on the expense side. We had told you we were probably gonna return four hundred and twenty-two thousand in fund balance, it'll be more, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, so we were dead-on with what we had said back in March, so we're real pleased with that. So, that'll be added to the fund balance, the fund balance report, we'll take our fund balance from eight point five million to eight point nine million. As the council's aware, the Long Range Finance Committee has adopted a policy that we stay, have a certain percent of our general fund and fund balance, as our budget increases, that requirement of that dollar amount goes up, percentage doesn't go up, but the dollar amount goes up, this key, we're keeping pace with that, which is very good news. So, that's pretty much what we have for 2016. The audit's finished, we're a few days away from submitting our state reports, and Ms. Larson reports that things are going well in that regard. As far as our first quarter, that report is also in your, your packet, it's the first quarter, you generally don't get a lot of indicators unless some real negative trend is there. There might be some numbers that vary differently from last year, but they're all explainable about something that maybe didn't get booked in the first quarter, or got booked in the first quarter, but there's no urgent issues that, that need reporting at this point. Ambulance revenues have always been an issue, we took a double look at that... We, we took a, a double look at that, and that's, that's tracking well. We are tracking above budget. That hasn't been the case for a few years, but we hit, we hit a dose of reality in terms of budgeting for that. And so I'm, I'm comfortable that, that we're going to continue to hit our targets on that now. Those are the two financial reports. You also received a hard copy of the first quarter strategic plan report. I believe Courtney provided a, a copy of the report in your packet, and I believe Courtney's here, so, you know, you got to at least ask her one question. She stayed every three.
Do you want to go home?
Yeah, actually, I do have one question. You now have added caution. What are we doing with the caution part of the strategic objectives when you put a caution out there? Is there a marker, stakeholder? How we move forward with that?
With the caution?
Yeah.
What we're talking about, we put them on that last page five, talking about why they're in caution.
Oh, okay. I missed that.
Yeah, we decided to put in an exception report because those are the ones where you really want to, really want to be concerned about. So appreciated Courtney doing that. Let's see. And there's a little explanation with all of those. Some of those just didn't get a chance to kick off, or, for example, this sort of a good news one, even though it was on caution. At the end of the quarter, it was doing educational opportunities for elected officials. We had an educational session on wetlands in April, so even though it was not good for the first quarter, we're, we're actually doing well because we caught up in the second quarter. What you can see is some of them, the central city investment strategy, contract planning firms behind schedule, we know that. You know, even though we unveiled the, the Sawdust District with everything going on with the arena, the full report is still not done, and the Sawdust District was more of a sizzle rather than the stake itself. We're still waiting for the stake, and so we'll be getting that to you shortly, but the firm has been behind. We did increase the scope because if you recall, we added the Ninth Avenue Corridor and the South Park Corridor. Happy to answer any other questions you might have about some of the other ones, because those are all in the caution area.
Yes. On our neighborhood strengthening, we've got one that's in caution. Can remind me what the caution means? We're just like way below plan, or what does the caution mean again?
Caution just means they're...
Kind of, go, go ahead. Because you've talked to the departments, Courtney, so you can.
Yeah. Caution means that there might not be a lot of movement on it. They're starting it, but it's, and it's still in progress. But if it's something that should have been done already in the first quarter, that kind of might be in caution. Behind is, or below plan is where it's not been touched yet, or like with the implemented central investment strategy, firm card, that's behind. That's why it's below plan.
Okay, so then caution is one notch up from below plan.
Correct.
Okay. So I just have a little bit of heartburn with this one because it says that the reason we're behind on developing a targeted light elimination process and program is due to budget and staff constraints. And I, I know there's this little thing called the Sawdust District that came up, but, you know, we, we now have Go HNI, Healthy Neighborhoods. We've got more staff in our community development than we've had in years, so.
On the community development side, though, we lost one of our staff who left in 2016. So our new person actually starts in a couple of weeks, so that will help with some of these items that are in caution. They'll be working on some of these projects. So that's why the staff needs to raise some control.
That's all I had.
Any other questions on that? Otherwise, another person who stuck around to the very end, I think it's just reflective, I don't know. I, I deserve the blame for not putting them up front. I don't know why, but I think it just shows. Chief Franz was recognized by Fox Valley Technical College as his outstanding alumni award recipient recently, and I think the council asked that, they wanted to thank him for that and recognize him for that, and his dedication, he's always here, even when we put him last on the agenda on a, a longer-than-usual council meeting. This just shows you his dedication. You know, I think the tech recognizes him not just for what he does for the Oshkosh Fire Department, which is phenomenal work, the dedication that, that Chief Franz has shown, but also his dedication to his profession in terms of training people, being a teacher, being a mentor to people. And I think it's appropriate that we do recognize and thank Chief Franz for his service.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that, but no problem. You know, it was very interesting tonight with everything that we were doing, actually.
We save the best for last.
Yeah, well, that, well, thanks for saying that. But just one thing that I want to say about that, and that it was quite an honor that was given to me by the Technical College. And one thing that I said to them that I would like to do, that every opportunity that I have to be involved with community forums or discussions about education, I take those opportunities and to be there and to discuss the value that I think that Technical Colleges offer in the education system and the process, and how important that is. So I not, didn't want to pass that opportunity up to, to just do that here again this evening. That there are so many jobs out there today that in the past, they've become much more complex, even at the basic level, entering the workforce. And the Technical College fills that gap. And we get to work with them as employers. I'm in an advisory committee for them, for them to design programs that fit the needs of the employers. And I think that's so important, and I think people really need to take a good, close look at that. A lot of people are told today, four-year degree is everything that you need, and headed into that direction. But where the gaps we have in the workforce now are in technical skilled jobs. And they're good jobs. They're, they're great jobs and have great pay. And there's other opportunities there. Not to say that a four-year degree isn't important, but another concept is incremental education. Start with your two-year degree, as I did, and continue on as you go along. And that keeps you from getting into that education gap. That's also a problem out there. So thanks for giving me a chance to give my little speech regarding the value of technical education. I appreciate your recognition this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief. We appreciate everything you've done for the city and do for the city.
And on very little sleep. That's the impressive part.
We're at this point of the evening that I would look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.